Recording in progress.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, we are live.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to the September 8th, 2025 meeting of the Pasadena City Council. Let me first start by apologizing on behalf of the council for our long closed session that's delayed this meeting, but we had some urgent and important matters in closed session that needed the council's attention. So my apologies on behalf of the council. The, we'll start with the calling of the role.
Councilmember Cole. Councilmember Hampton.
Blessed and honored to be here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Lyon.
Here.
Councilmember Madison.
Here.
Councilmember Masuda.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rivas.
Here.
Mayor Gordo.
Here.
There's a form of the council president.
Okay, we have a couple of ceremonial matters. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Hampton, would you lead us in? Everyone rise, right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. So as I was saying, we have two ceremonial matters. The first, I'll ask Chief Harris to step up and introduce our new Sergeant at Arms as we thank our outgoing Sergeant at Arms, Jason Van Heck, for her service as.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's going to be the Division Commander for Field Operations, Commander Sean Dawkins, who's going to make that introduction.
Great, thank you, Chief. Commander, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city staff. Sergeant Rich Padilla, could you please join me up here? This evening, I have the pleasure of introducing to you your new Sergeant at Arms for City Council. I'll give you a quick brief bio on Sergeant Padilla. Richard Padilla has been with the Pasadena Police Department for 27 years. He joined the department after graduating from the University of Laverne with a bachelor's degree of criminology. As an officer, Richard was assigned to the following sections: patrol, the special investigation section, vice narcotics. Patrol as a field training officer, he was my field training officer a couple of years back, and the Neighborhood Action Team as a bicycle officer. As a corporal, he was assigned to patrol and then detectives as a residential burglary investigator. In 2014, he was promoted to sergeant. As sergeant, he supervised patrol, the field training program, the HOPE team, park safety, and the K-9 unit. In 2018, he reestablished the Neighborhood Action Team, a marked bicycle unit specializing in quality of life issues. In 2020, he was given the opportunity to supervise the K-9 unit on a full-time basis. He currently serves as a dual, a dual role as both a K-9 supervisor and a K-9 handler. His partner, Peppa, is a six-year-old Belgian Malinois trained to detect explosives and firearms. Together, they have worked four Rose Bowl seasons, ensuring the safety and security of both the Rose Bowl and the Rose Parade. In 2018, Sergeant Padilla was recognized as a police, as Police Officer of the Year by the Pasadena Scottish Rite. He's a post-certified bicycle instructor, post-K-9 evaluator, and a K-9 subject matter expert. In his spare time, he enjoys cheering for his favorite baseball team, the Dodgers, and spending time with his wife Diana and their two children, Isabella, a college student, and Gavin, a high school student. And I would be remiss if I didn't add that recently, last week, Chief Harris promoted Sergeant Padilla to acting lieutenant, where he'll step into that role as one of the watch commanders in patrol in two weeks from today, on September 22nd, while Lieutenant Quayre is attending the FBI National Academy. So he'll be doing that for about three months with us. In addition to his roles here, he'll still be with, with all of you every Monday night for City Council. I'll let Rich Padilla come up and say a few words. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. I'd just like to thank everyone for the opportunity to be here, and I'm looking forward to learning more about the, what the City Council does and, and more about these meetings and how it helps out every other department other than the police department in our city. So thank you for the opportunity once again.
Do we get the dog?
Yeah.
She's out in the car right now.
Bring her in. Thank you and welcome. Next, we have an announcement and presentation related to the Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month celebrations. I'll ask Pam Cantero and Vania de la Cuba and Lisa Barrios to step forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm Vania de la Cuba. I am the co-chair of the Pasadena Latino Heritage Parade and Festival Committee. My co-chair, my colega, Lisa Barrios Isaguirre, wasn't able to join us this evening. She's ill. Lisa, we hope you're feeling better really soon. So I'm here also with my colleague Pam Cantero Morey from PRCS to talk about this year's Latino Heritage Month and the celebrations that we've got underway. This year has been a difficult year for our committee, as it has been for our Latino community here in Pasadena. And this morning's Supreme Court ruling allowing detentions based on race, language, and simply where a person works wasn't only troubling, it is a step backwards for justice in our nation. Seeing the ICE raids and the impact that they have had in our community has been difficult, troubling, heartbreaking, heartbreaking to see the impact on our kids, personally difficult for many of us, as many of us can absolutely connect with those families. And yet, we know the strength of our Pasadena community, and our strength is really deep, and it comes from the diversity that we have and from the hard-working families, our hard-working immigrant families who are here and who help make our community as great and as strong as it is. So it is that belief that led to our theme for this year's Latino Heritage Celebration: Un Pasadena con orgullo, un futuro con esperanza. A proud past and a hopeful future. And after much discussion with our partners and others out in the community, our committee came to a really difficult decision, but one that reflects both our compassion and our responsibility. This year, we are foregoing the parade, but we are expanding the Latino Heritage Festival in front of Pasadena City Hall, and we're going to offer many community-centered programming, education, things that uplift our community, things that are fun, dancing, music. It's going to be in the evening to make it more comfortable for our neighbors to come out and to celebrate, and for you all too, Mayor, now that we've seen you dancing. Exactly, there you go. Come out and, and, and join us and join the Latino community, your community, in this celebration, because even though times are really heavy, the fear is real, there is a lot to celebrate, the strength that we have in our community, the beauty of our community is worth celebrating, and so we hope that you will join us all on that evening. During the month of Latino Heritage, we do have a variety of other activities that have also been planned, so that there's educational things, fun things for kids, for seniors, for adults, something for everyone. And I can, I'll have my colleague Pam talk a little bit more about that.
Good evening. Just like Vania said, our goal is to bring joy into our community. We're going to be having a series of events or smaller events, workshops. We're having Fiesta Patrias, September 19th at Villa Park from 5 to 9. We're having the movie Elio at Madison Elementary Friday, September 26th. We're having a pan dulce or a concha-making class at Villa Park on October 4th. We're having Pain and Hours Frescas, Villa Park, October 18th, and we're going to be celebrating Day of the Dead, October 24th. Hopefully, you can join us for one of those events. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Councilmember Jones has an adjournment memory.
Thanks, Mayor. I have two adjournments. The first one is for Reverend Dr. Joan Taylor. She was a reverend at First AMI Pasadena, born and raised in the city of Pasadena, was a resident of Mr. Hampton's district, and she served our community throughout her life. And so I think it's, it's an honor for her family, at least has been communicated to me, that we adjourn in her honor, the city council and the city that she was born and raised in. And then the second adjournment is Mr. William Larry Edson. Similar story, born and raised in the city of Pasadena, I believe at St. Luke's Hospital. He grew up Pasadena, attended John Mayer High School. He was the vice president of Union Bank of California. He married Geraldine Edson, and together, they built a multifamily residential housing portfolio in the city of Pasadena, and he also was deeply committed to civic and community life. He was engaged in his church, engaged as the board of director for LA Athletic Club, and he was also on the board of Friends of Cleveland Elementary and supported Door of Hope and also supported Steam Coaters Community Partners and just was a very big advocate for the city of Pasadena and its residents.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I, and I know I'm joined by all of my colleagues here, asked that we adjourn in memory of Nina Chomsky, longtime resident and environmental advocate. In Nina's loss, Pasadena's loss, one of its fiercest and most passionate advocates. She was an attorney, an extraordinarily intelligent leader, a tireless volunteer, and poured herself into protecting the Arroyo championing neighborhoods and preserving Pasadena's historic beauty and legacy. For decades, she was a constant presence in our community and in our city council chambers, always speaking up for, for preservation, thoughtful architecture, design, planning, importantly, diversity, and improving the quality of life for all of us who call Pasadena home. And she was a formal advocate, always prepared, always principled, and never about making, never shy about making her opinion known. In fact, some would say, you know, she was, she could be a bit stubborn, and I would say, and thank goodness for that, because she always caused us to think differently and because of that, more deeply, and we made better decisions as a city, as a city council and as a city. She leaves behind a legacy of service, civic pride, and spirited leadership. And so on behalf of all of us, and on behalf of all residents of Pasadena, I want to say that Nina's a tremendous loss, but a tremendous contributor and leaves behind a legacy of great contributions. I think we can find her fingerprint on virtually every important decisions in the last 30 to 40 years in this city. You know, on a personal level, I didn't always have a good relationship with Nina. In fact, when I was a member of the RBOC, we were going through the renovation project, Nina, you'll recall, Mr. Madison and others, made it a habit to show up at RBOC meetings and city council meetings and ask for my resignation. And she did so, and she meant it. But, you know, like any other good person, she gave me a chance, and she gave me a chance to prove myself. And one day, I got a call just over five years ago from her and McCannson saying, I'd, you know, like to invite you to breakfast. We've never sat down. And so I thought to myself, well, should I bring a taster? But no, you know, I showed up at Brookside Park, at Brookside Clubhouse, and before I was able to sit down, as I was sitting down, she points at me and says, I never thought I'd agree with you on anything, but you should be our next mayor. And she's the person who really got me thinking about that. You know, that's a very important moment for me and showed a lot about her and her willingness to, to give people a chance and give this city a chance. And so on behalf of all of us, I'd like to say thank you, Nina Chomsky, for all of your contributions. Mr. Madison.
Thank you, Mayor. Very well said, and I don't want to prolong the evening, but I, this was a major loss for Pasadena, and I too have many arrows in my back from Nina over the years. But actually, that's even unfair, because Nina wouldn't stab you in the back. She would tell you to your face when she thought you were wrong.
Right here.
And, and Larry Wilson put it so well in his piece that she would come to council and end up filling out cards on things that she hadn't intended to speak on, and, and she would begin those remarks with, I wasn't going to speak on this, but I have to tell you. But we need people like Nina, who are dedicated, who care, who do what they say they're going to do, who show up. You know, for young people, you will find that when you do what you say you're going to do and you show up, that that separates you sadly from most of the world in terms of integrity and, and being there. And, you know, Nina was a pioneer. She was, became a lawyer in 1973, and it's hard to believe, because it's seems, you know, forever ago, and also not that long ago, it was very difficult to be a female attorney in 1973. Those were the days when, not too far after, people like Justice Sandra De O'Connor were offered legal secretary jobs instead of the job that the number three person in her class, in the case of O'Connor, should have received at law firms. The sexism was still rampant in the profession, and she proudly became an attorney and was a great lawyer. And her, her intellect was just unwavering. She had paid attention to detail. She read everything. She studied everything. We need people like that in the, in our community to keep us on our toes and to keep us all moving in the right direction. In April, she stepped away from the LVAA board and was, I joke that she was claimed as a free agent by the WPRA, who put her on their board and assigned her to some mandate, but she'd been on the LVAA board for as long as I could remember, for decades, and been the president of it for, for many, many years. And I am so thankful that we collectively at a, at a town hall about the fires that we had in April, we honored Nina and thanked her for her decades of service. Even that was painful, though, because she insisted, we go to her home, pick her up, drive her to the event, drive her home, and she didn't really know what was going to happen, but we presented her with a certificate and some flowers, and, and she was pleased as punch, because her efforts weren't often enough recognized. So her memorial is pending, and I think I'll be involved in that in some way, shape, or form, along with the many, many other friends she has in the, in the community. And, you know, very, very grateful. And it's so tragic that she died in a, in a house fire that should be prevented, you know, these days with technology, and our fire department was there instantly, but the home was a, it's the so-called butterfly house on Lancashire, wood and glass, basically. And so it, it was, you know, a very rapid conflagration. And anyway, thank you, Mayor, and I hope we will adjourn in Nina's memory and honor. Thank you.
And, you know, I, I'm confident that there will be an opportunity for an appropriate dedication to recognize Nina's contributions and, and fingerprint in every part of our city. A lasting contribution. Mr. Hampton.
I appreciate everything that everyone has said, you know, about Mrs. Taylor, Mr. Edson, Ms. Chomsky. I know that there are people watching this right now, and I know that there's some young people actually watching this, because there was a high school student that reached out to me about watching a city council meeting. I said, you could look at them on YouTube now. By the way, you can watch this on YouTube. As we talk about these individuals, I mean, they were amazing people in our community. They were bricks of roads that had been paved, that had been paved by people before them, but they kept on moving forward. I would just remind everyone in this room to not be the problem, but be the person who solves the problem. And these individuals are all individuals who solve problems. They didn't bring us problems. They, they said, this could be a problem, and here's how you can fix it. And so I just want to say that I appreciate knowing all three of these individuals, and as a silent second to adjourn in their, their memory tonight, they will never be forgotten in this community. Thank you.
Well said, Mr. Hampton. Thank you. Okay. It's, we'll move on now with, with our agenda. Well, we'll start with public comment for matters not on the agenda. And before we start that, let me just say that the council will recall that earlier this year, a number of council members, including Mr. Cole and, no, Mr. Cole and a few others, Mr. Lyon, others, requested the issue of an ethical investment policy. I think Mr. Cole raised it at Finance Committee initially, that it come to Finance Committee. The, because the matter has been delayed first by the budget and then other urgent items, I've conferred with Councilmember Cole to, and to suggest that this be referred directly to the Fire and Police and Pension Fund, the issue of divestment. And so, and well, the issue of an investment policy, I should say. And he is now a member of that board and in a position to ask that the matter be agendized for a discussion. And he will be requesting a special meeting of the board to do so. And that's the body that has jurisdiction. This should not be thought of as, you know, some sort of punt, because we have to follow our own rules, and jurisdiction on these matters is with that board. And that there will be an opportunity there to give public comment, and I look forward to, of productive discussion by that board. So with that.
Mayor, I was one of the council members, and before.
Yeah, actually.
We had the public.
Yeah.
I don't need the credit or anything, but I, I do definitely want to make sure that we have a, I mean, because we're going to get this more and more and more and more. I mean, the way our world is shifting, things are changing. I think there should be a policy that we have across the board that just says, you know what? If we find an organization that has, or anyone that has, you know, not caused war crimes, et cetera, I have no idea. I mean, that's what the, the great minds of attorneys are to, to think about those, but that we are not investing in any businesses that are supporting atrocities like what's happening in Gaza. I appreciate that, but I got ADHD, and that messes up my train of thought, so. At least my wife tells me I got it, so.
Could be a long list. Okay. So let's, so let's move on, because we have a long agenda with matters agendized. We're going to suggest one minute per speaker for matters not on the agenda. If you wish to have more time, please state so, and then at the end of the agenda, we'll give you more time. But I think it's fair to say that, let's, we're going to try and get as many people in as we can, one minute. Please respect that, and if you want more time, we invite you to allow us to conduct the city's business, address matters on the agenda, and then come back. Okay, with that.
Fawaz Elmasri, followed by Hadab Tarifi, then Lucinda Wills, then Olden Denham. I'll ring a bell when there's 30 seconds. Fawaz?
And we have over 20 cards, and so.
21.
21. So if you, if you hear your name, please step up and form a line in the center aisle here.
Mr. Mayors? Councilmembers, dear community, respected members, I'm going to read their names as the children that were killed in Gaza. Mayan Yahya Yusuf Alastal, Watin Tarek Ramazd Dahshan, Ali Ahmed Ali Aswad, Ahmed Mohammed Fuad Saqali, Ra'id Ahmed Ra'id Al Khawli, Ra'fah Mohammed Ra'fah Ta'abid, Watin Baraa Abdurrahman Al Hor, Li Muhammad Fala'h Yasin, Ta'wa Mohammed Basam Farah, Bashir Ghassan, Khalil Hamdan, Renad Fadi Hamdan Shannon, Namaan Muaid Namaan Rayan, Mohammed Mustafa Mohammed Abu Nasr, Ali Ra'id Khalil Rahmi, Eli Nahmed Abdurrahman Abdur Karim Saqali, Qusai Salahaj Jamal Dine Abu Ayta, Mohammed Yahya Ahmed Abu Halima, Deema Abdurrahman Mohammed Salha, Ah Malak Walid Yusuf Abu Khair, Hor Yahya Amjad.
Sir, your time has expired.
I'm sorry?
Your time has expired.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hadab Tarifi, followed by Lucinda Wills, followed by Olden Denham, then Alan Shay.
Greetings of peace, everyone. Last time, I left sad and extremely upset. After I shared the picture and the name of my niece, who was killed just a few days earlier, none of you showed empathy, sympathy, or even one word of condolences after giving us almost an hour, giving condolences and eulogy about the previous mayor. So just to let you know. But you're not getting rid of me so easily. I am back, and all the names that are going to be read about these kids who have been killed, I'm going to ask, I'm going to share a few questions that these kids have been asking. Instead of asking about what gift they're going to get, all these questions are about death. After we die, will I hear your voice? When I die, will they put me in a grave with my mom and dad? When it rains, will we drown in the tent? When they bomb us in the tent, will we burn? If they bombed someone while I was walking next to him?
Ms. Tarifi, your time has expired.
I hope these questions touch your heart, because they broke mine.
Thank you, ma'am.
Lucinda Wills, followed by Olden Denham, followed by Alan Shay, then Randall Hein Lamb.
Dr. Ahmed Sayem is a surgeon with Doctors Without Borders. This is a story in, in his words, it had to fit our short time limit. The last thing I heard was the voice of my children playing. Then everything went black. When I opened my eyes, I thought I'd gone blind. I could no longer hear them. I checked to see if my wife was alive. Her back and legs were fractured, but she was alive. I turned on my phone flashlight to find the children. My three-year-old daughter, Julia, was calling to me from beneath the rubble. I carried her to a safe place and went back for my second son, Kareem. He had severe head trauma. When I brought them to the hospital, I refused to let my colleagues deal with their injuries. I wanted them to feel our dad is taking care of us. Maybe he's still our hero. We're doing okay now, I guess. My wife is in a wheelchair now. She can't walk, so I'm everyone's caregiver. The children's wounds are healing slowly, but they cannot talk or eat well. I'm trying to keep myself together so they can still see me as their hero, but no, I'm not strong now. There's so much fear that they will never recover. If there's another strike near us, they will lose their mind, and I have so much guilt because I'm the reason we stayed. We had a chance to leave Gaza a year ago. I refused because I love my people and my patients, but I regret it now. We used to be a beautiful family, but now, I don't know.
Your time has expired, sir. Olden Denham, followed by Alan Shay, then Randall Hein Lamb, then Mrs. Jane Al Farah.
Well, I'm no stranger to everyone here, and everyone knows.
If everyone will form a line, whose name was called, please.
Excuse you.
Sorry, Mr. Wilson.
Everyone knows my name, everyone, I'm no stranger here, and everyone knows what I'm here about. I came here a few years ago trying to get some justice. All I had was the truth in my hand telling. I put the truth on the table, but I've seen this truth being put down by lies. I've seen police officers say that Anthony McLean had a gun in his hand. I've seen nobody look at the footage long enough to know that he didn't have a gun in his hand. He had a cell phone in his left hand, and the only other, and the other thing that I got to say, because I know I don't have much time, is his dying declaration was, after being asked, where was his gun? He said, his dying declaration, I don't have one.
Thank you. Mr. Shay.
First of all, I'd like to thank Commissioner, I mean, Councilmember Hampton. I think he said the most poetic thing tonight, and that is being a problem solver. I would hope that the councilmen, as the chair of the public safety, indicate whether we're going to close out our requests to have a properly-held agenda item instead of continuing to ask that we get it done correctly. It was requested that we have it heard and discussed. The city attorney brought forth the law, which was not complied with by the police officers. So if it doesn't stop here, we're going to take it to the Oversight Commission and keep putting it forth. So we are asking that you put an end to it now, and either make a declaration that it is ended now, you're not going to move forward, and then we'll take it to another level, or we. and then we'll take it to another level, or we get it corrected here and call it closure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shea.
Randall Hein Lamb, followed by Mrs. Jane Alfara, followed by Danelia Hein Lamb, and then Bailey Payne.
Please make your way forward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I want to say that your words about Nina were very moving and I hope you will remember that as we continue to be stubborn. I won't call for your resignation here today, but as we move.
Thank you.
Stubborn. These are names of children who never reached their third month of life, who were killed in Gaza. Shaima Nabil Al Lacham, Samar Mohammed Abu Ghayt, Hind Khalid Jajo, Maryam Suhail Abed, Mahmoud Abdullah Hamad, Suliman Jabr Krynawi, Habiba Amar Al Shrafi, Samir Mohammed Tamraz, Juri Anas Shamia, Alma Adnan Jamal, Wesam Wisam Sala Saleh, Abdullah Riyad Al Sayed, Alma Ala Mukbil, Khalid Rabah Al Hato, Abdel Rahman Hamuda, Bilal Kamal Hamdan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Jane Alfara.
Okay, thank you.
Daniela Hein Lamb. Then Bailey Payne, then Paul, then Simon Gibbons.
Hi, I'm Doni Hein Lamb, resident in Pasadena, District Five. I was gutted today to hear of yet another act of violence, this time in Jerusalem. Mainstream media across our country will cover this act of violence. We'll know their names, we'll know all about them, we'll be able to recite their names. Unlike the perhaps 66,000 officially declared dead in Gaza, of whom we know very few of their names. The names I read today are all babies, two months old, who have died, been killed in Gaza. Arifa Sabersala Abu Leila, Bisan Ibrahim Mohammed Al Malaaha, Malak Ahmed Mahir Abu Ida, Gayd Yasser Nabil Nafal, Mustafa Mohammed Farid Kandil, Asid Hussein Mohammed Abu Hamad.
Thank you.
May they rest in peace.
Bailey Payne, followed by Paul, followed by Simon Gibbons, then Dr. Treasure Shepherd.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I wanted to share a story to explain why I will keep showing up at city council meetings advocating for divestment from the genocide in Palestine. The Red Crescent gets a phone call from a 15-year-old girl in a car in distress begging for help. Her family is trying to flee, but they're surrounded by Israeli tanks in Gaza. Then shrieks, rounds of rapid fire, and then no more voice of a 15-year-old girl. The only voice left was that of Hind Rajab, the six-year-old girl with the flower crown. She says the tank is right next to her. She says it's dark and she's scared. She begs for the operator to come rescue her. The operator stayed on the phone with her for hours, reciting the Quran, while two paramedics are trying to find her in an ambulance. Then the call goes silent. The Israeli tank killed the two paramedics and the ambulance and Hind Rajab, the six-year-old girl with the flower crown. That tank was paid by my tax dollars and that haunts me. So I will continue to show up until our tax dollars are used differently.
Thank you. Paul, followed by Simon Gibbons, then Dr. Treasure Shepherd, then Chelsea.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'd like to read the names of one-year-old children killed in Gaza. Eileen Ahmed Abdel Muti Ajrami, Leanne Bilal Shaban Al Husami, Massa Ala Al Din Ali Uda, Talia Matasam Samir Masbe, Malak Yasser Mohammed Dawud, Zina Fadi Mohammed Hajazi, Massa Ahmed Farah Nasr, Mira Mahmoud Fadi Amajida, Juman Osama.
Sir, your time has expired. Simon Gibbons, followed by Dr. Treasure Shepherd, then Chelsea, then Scott Habermell.
Thank you. Last year, I stood in front of this dais with a group of other people, asking you to review the way that you manage rents in Pasadena. We looked at whether we could make some adjustments to measure PR. And we were told we needed to wait until the next electoral cycle, we'd see how things worked out. As you know, the rent department is not doing well. And last week, as part of the California Apartment Association's lawsuit, I took part in the, the appeal court and listened in and heard the words from Justice Siegel. This is the most unfair discriminatory rent stabilization board that I've ever seen. I'd like you to think about this and as we move into the next electoral cycle, as new options are put in front of you, to consider how we can make a reasonable approach to managing rent in Pasadena that makes sure that all voices are heard so that we can have a stable and suitable way to ensure affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Treasure Shepherd, followed by Chelsea, followed by Scott Habermell, then Michael Benura.
Thank you. They're supposed to be a visual that Coco Fanasian sent to IT to post up right now regarding the concert series. But I'm here as CEO of the Pasadena Recreation and Parks Foundation. We partnered with the city to bring back the Levitt Foundation Concert Series for three years. So we need everyone to vote. They have until the 15th to do so, 5:00 PM on that day, random time, but please do so. Just text PASTADINA to the number 1-877-409-5525 and whenever you guys put up the visual, that'd be great. Second, Councilmember Cole, please take care of this divestment issue. You're hearing all of this. I know you care. I've talked to you, but yes, we need to handle that and I agree with Hampton. We need to make sure that citywide, we are prepared for this in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chelsea, followed by Scott Habermell, followed by Michael Benura, then Nasir Karse.
Yes, this is Chelsea. I reside in District Seven and thank you Hampton for your interest in divestment. That's actually something I wanted to bring up about just the media attention right now in Israel today about eight civilians who were wounded by Palestinian shooters at a bus stop. However, as I've been sharing, Israel military intelligence data indicates that five out of six Palestinians killed by Israel's army are civilians. The 83% of civilian deaths is extremely high for modern warfare and even when compared to recent civil wars in Syria and Sudan. Did that mean it was done?
No, you have 30 seconds.
Okay. Amnesty International has concluded that Israel's committing genocide in Gaza, joining more than 400 genocide scholars. So your continued interest is really key right now. Thank you so much, Council. God bless you guys.
Thank you. Scott Habermell, followed by Michael Benura, then Nasir Karse, then David Bond, then Pranit.
Hello, my name is Scott Habermell. I'm a resident of Pasadena, District Seven. I'm here today to give my unqualified support for the Pasadena Greenways Project. I believe that everyone deserves the right to get around Pasadena safely without a car. And by that, I mean they should be, they should both be safe and feel safe. In addition, I think that includes walking, by bike, by scooter, or by public transport. The Greenways are a low-impact project that promises to give neighborhood streets back to the people who live on them while allowing those who don't to safely get around Pasadena on a bike. Please put them on the agenda and please approve the plan following the All Ages and Abilities Guidelines. Thank you.
Michael Benura, followed by Nasir Karse, followed by David Bond, then Pranit, then Levant Akbarut.
Thank you. Mayor and councilmembers, while the, while the FBRAS Board will make the decision to divest, the City Council can still pass a resolution calling on the FBRAS Board to divest. That will show that the council cares that we are involved in genocide. Please be strong leaders. Thank you.
Nasir Karse, followed by David Bond, then Pranit. Nasir?
Yes, and it's Nasir Kar.
Nasir, sorry.
Thank you so much for having us and I appreciate you serving our community. However, I am here today to, and I was very touched by what everybody said about Nina. And in my mind, I'm thinking, how many thousands of Palestinians have been killed? And I would like for us to recognize at least the loss of the children and the honest people, the, the young people. So what I was going to mention is just a couple of names, one-year-olds that have passed away, have been killed by Israeli killers. Mohammed Abdullah, Nadia Nadir, Sannad Ahmed, Sayla Mu'min, Abir Ibrahim, Ali Hasim, Majd Muhammad. So I'm just reading a few. These are one-year-olds. 2,000 of them were killed, which is just amazing.
Your time has expired, David Bond, followed by Pranit, then Levant Akbarut and Maryam Gaada.
City Council, I am here in support of the City Council's divestment of all of the genocide actors that's occurring right now in Palestine. It is the worst genocide that we have seen. It is being televised to us and we're seeing hundreds of thousands of innocent civilians killed. We're seeing a famine imposed by our tax dollars and this city has investment into these actors. We must show a united front of ending this genocide.
Pranit, followed by Levant Akbarut, then Miriam Gaada, then Anna Soul River, and then Michael Tucker will be the last speaker on matters not on the agenda.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Pranit. I just wanted to ask you guys again to divest from all, all the companies that are currently profiting off of the genocide that's happening in Gaza. As you guys saw, maybe in Santa Monica, they have a financial emergency because of a huge lawsuit that they faced and they're unable to balance their books. And the same thing will happen to Pasadena once they find that we are also guilty of committing genocide as we own, we are partial owners in some of the war companies. So again, this is more of a legal protection for Pasadena is we need to make sure we divest from all of them because as Amnesty and all ICJ, ICC has determined the genocide has been committed, we are responsible for that. So let's divest as quickly as possible so we don't get any legal repercussions as the city of Pasadena. Thank you.
Thank you. Levant Akbarut, then Maryam Gaada, then Anna Soul River, and then Michael Tucker, who's participating virtually.
Okay, my name is Levant Akbarut. I'm a resident of Pasadena. I have a list of 1,896 children and it's probably a way more now that have died since July 15th, 2025. My list consists of number 904, Karim Nadal, Zoher Salman. And last on my list, but not least, is Jaud Mahmoud Mohammed Hamdan. All the names here are children that are 11 months old. All of them are just 11 months old. And I would like to say that let's adjourn with the remembrance of the beautiful children of Gaza. Hopefully, we can think deeply and make right decisions. Do not be a genocide denier. Do not fall for the public, for the public relations machine that are perpetuating lies and encouraging the genocide in Gaza.
Maryam Gaada, Gaada, followed by Anna Soul River, and then Michael Tucker.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Maryam Sada. I'm an educator. I work with children every day. This is Suicide Prevention Month. And it's ironic that I work on the prevention end of death and I get trained to see the signs and prevent and save lives before they go. And I'm standing here with a list of lives that are gone. And I tell my students every day, you know, as a good taxpayer, I don't want my money to go to this. I really don't. I work really hard so that my students go to college. We improve this, you know, they find their American dream, they live it, not for the sake of anything. So it's the question here is not if, when, if we're going to divest, is when. Thank you.
Anna Soul River.
Yes. Good evening, Councilmembers. I'm speaking as a concerned Pasadena resident. After reviewing the Department of Transportation's hydrogen bus proposal and hearing expert analysis like YoRum of the Bulbs Podcast, I urge real caution. Yes, hydrogen grants are tempting and a few extra miles of wrench may sound appealing, but those short-term benefits don't justify the long-term cost. Hydrogen is incredibly energy-intensive to produce and as the solar and battery technologies keep improving, hydrogen becomes harder to justify, not easier. Even so cold clean hydrogen has major climate drawbacks. Not the best idea.
Okay, Michael Tucker, who's participating virtually. Mr. Tucker, I'll ring a bell when you have 30 seconds left.
There you go. There we go. All right. My name is Michael Tucker and I'm addressing the Pasadena City Council today to express a serious concern as a citizen of the City of Pasadena, District One. First, an expression of principle. For me, every human being that lives and works in this city is a member of this community and deserving of its respect and protection regardless of their federal immigration status. Everybody has inalienable human rights and it is our duty as a community to look out for all of us. My concern is the expected resumption of the ICE raids in our community after the disappointing Supreme Court decision that put a stay on the district court order stopping them. That decision was handed down with no explanation despite two lower courts finding the stoppage order illegal and appropriate. The brief review of, a brief review of ICE's motives abroad. ICE deputies are often masked and do not identify themselves. They detain people who have committed no crimes and interrogate them in the street. They imprison people, some of whom are later discovered to be American citizens unjustly and without warrant. The last item is my biggest concern. I don't understand how we can allow people to essentially be kidnapped by someone cosplaying as a federal officer without providing the requisite proof, such as a signed warrant or at least ID proving they are a federal agent. I want to know what the City Council has done and or plans to do to protect the members of our community from these constitutional activities and dangers.
Mr. Tucker, your time has expired.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
That completes public comment on, on matters not on the agenda.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience and for adhering to the time limit.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Cole?
I'll be brief. I took to heart the comment made both to me after the meeting and then tonight at the beginning of public comment that we've heard week after week eloquent and heartfelt concerns expressed by members of our community and that seemingly by our silence, we showed lack of empathy and compassion. I don't think that's the case with any of the members up here, but I understand how people would interpret that silence. These are deeply troubling times in our country and in our world. And what is happening in, in Gaza and the West Bank and now in Israel again is heartbreaking and sickening. So I would ask, in the, in the spirit of empathy and compassion, it's estimated that more than 700 civilians were killed on October 7th in Israel. And as we all know, well over 50,000 Gazans have died in nearly two years of warfare against a civilian population. So I would ask that we also tonight adjourn in memory of all of the innocent victims of this war.
I'd give a silent second to that and then I have one thing. That's not such a silent second.
Well. I get it. You can't be silent here, you know, Mike, but a silent second to that. And I also wanted to say to Missy Dodd, I'm so sorry to hear about your niece. I wasn't here when you told the story, but I just want you to know that I love you and your, your family. I just want you to know that I'm, I'm here in any way, any capacity I could be for you. I love you.
I, I think, you know, the, the public should also understand that, you know, it's, it was well put by Mr. Cole, Mr. Hampton, and I think you speak for the rest of the council. But, you know, by law, we're prohibited from engaging or addressing matters that are not on our agenda. And so I, I just want you to understand that it's not.
And so I just want you to understand that it's not, don't interpret our silence as, you know, a lack of sympathy or empathy for anyone who has lost a family member on whatever side they may be on, in any part of the world, in any atrocity, including in this country. And so, you know, we will adjourn in memory of all victims of violence anywhere and anywhere they may be. With that, we will move on to the consent calendar.
For the consent calendar, we have one speaker card for item eight. We did receive correspondence for item four, five, and eight, with those letters distributed to the council, posted online, and part of the record for each of those items.
Okay. Mayor.
I have concerns on items seven and eight.
Seven. Okay. You wanna hold them? Okay. Is there a motion? Is that a motion on the remainder of the consent calendar?
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Are there any objections?
I'm sorry, six and seven, not seven and eight. I apologize.
Six and seven. Yeah. Six and seven, you're dropping eight.
No, eight too. Six, seven, eight.
Well, we have a speaker card on, we have a speaker card on item eight.
Okay. So six, seven, and eight are held, and the remainder of the consent calendar is subject of a motion. Any objections? Seeing none, let's start with item six. Mr. Cole.
So I was on Municipal Services Committee. My colleagues gave it serious consideration. I'm concerned about our recommendation. The, under the proposal, we move now to as little as one-third of the residents of a block could, could be successful in voting for speed humps. I made a motion for a higher threshold, which is that at least fifty percent of the people, meaning sixty-seven percent of the voting, but at least fifty percent of the people who live there. The staff made a very persuasive, to my colleague, argument that it's very difficult, particularly in some neighborhoods where there's a higher level of renters, et cetera. But I think it's, we will encounter down the road some concerns when people say, how come there are speed humps on my street? And we'll say, we had an election, and half the people voted, and two-thirds of the people voted for speed humps, which means that two-thirds of the people haven't weighed in. I think that's difficult, but I am not going to do anything other than suggest to my colleagues who are not at MSC, if you share that concern, we could discuss it. Otherwise, I'm prepared to, I don't think it's a bad choice, but I would be more comfortable with at least fifty percent of the people on a street saying they wanted speed humps.
I agree with you. Given our history on speed humps, it's been my experience that once they're installed, there are unintended consequences. You know, people speeding up to the hump, slowing down, going over it, and causes noise and sometimes screeching. And then there are other issues when people don't slow down for the speed hump, and cars bottom out, maybe lose control. My experience is that sometimes people who, you know, be careful what you wish for. Sometimes they wanted, some wanted to speed hump, and then they want them out. In fact, at one point, we took up a policy in Pasadena that if a neighborhood wanted them out, they had to pay to remove them. And so I think, I would suggest that we hold this matter and revisit particularly the issue of a threshold.
Mayor, oh. Oh, my bad, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your comments on that. Councilmember Cole, I have experience with this, kind of like on a negative experience on it, starting with Green Hill. And, you know, there was a, someone that wanted bumps on Green Hill, really, it was like she was running for election, you know, and really going to all the houses. And then they put, you know, speed bumps on that street, and everybody was complaining about it, you know, and when I was walking, you know, the, when I was walking in two thousand and eleven, they told me how much they hated the speed bumps. Well, she moved away, you know, the lady that wanted it. And now the, the, the traffic goes on to the adjacent streets, and that's the problem with having speed bumps if you're not careful. Thank you.
And then there's the issue of, you know, people want, some people want the speed humps, and then there's one put in front of their home, and they say, no, move it over. And so I think this, this, well, let's hear from members of the MSC. Mr. Hampton. The policy went through so many different, I mean, it went through other committees as well, so there was a lot of time for residents to chime in. In my district, there have been speed bump petitions that have gone out, and transportation didn't get enough, or enough responses at all, right? And so we have to ask transportation to send out another ballot, and they were kind enough to do it, sometimes in some cases, up to three to four times, to get the response, either yes or no. Most cases, it was always in favor, or someone looked at the mailer that came in, and they were like, I'm not paying for nothing. I don't know what the city is sending me, because it probably looks like a bill or something to them. But I would say that I think that the policy that was put together by the Transportation Department and the Transportation Committee, yeah, Transportation Committee, Commission, sorry, Commission of the city members is actually a solid policy. The one thing I would have added to this would be, as Councilmember Cole has mentioned, you know, having below fifty percent or having, would be to notify the residents sixty days prior to the install. If they want to respond, they have sixty days putting notices along the corridor of that street that will say, speed bumps will be installed if you have questions or concerns to reach out. I think that would be fair, and then transportation would have the opportunity to look at those and say, you know what? Now that everybody has weighed in on this, and they really notice this, and they're not just throwing away that mailer. Long story short, because otherwise, we could just have, you know, ten households on a house, on a street of, you know, thirty households that are all in favor of it, and everybody else says, absolutely no. Because everybody looked at the mailer, and they said, oh, I'm not gonna, I don't need to respond to this. I don't need to, I don't need to look at this. Or maybe there's just another way to advertise that we're asking for your input. I think that's, I think that's what we're, what's being suggested. And it's a good suggestion. I mean, I don't want to infer from people's unwillingness sometimes to respond that therefore are against. Sometimes people don't respond because they're against. Mr. Jones.
Thanks, Mayor. And we did have this discussion at MSC, and I believe it was a unanimous decision, but Mr. Cole did bring up his recommendation as part of a second motion. But I think it's important to know, like, this policy is in response to the residents coming to their council members. And what we've seen from DLT is that we've put out the, the speed markers. A resident will petition for a speed hump, and they didn't meet the threshold, right? They didn't meet the thousand, was it, car trips per day? So we've lowered that to five hundred. Oftentimes, when even if they did meet the thousand, they didn't get the sixty-seven percent response rate that they were required. And so now the residents who have actively engaged and organized, they don't get the speed humps. And so our fear was, is that if we didn't revise this policy, then we'll just be back at the same issue again, residents asking for speed humps and they not qualifying for it. I mean, it's a good point about what Mr. Cole brought up, and we did defer to Joaquin and his team to do some further investigation and then come back with a recommendation of a response rate, because originally, there was no minimum response rate. I believe it was just based on your engineering judgment. And so then part of that discussion, we landed at a, for Joaquin to come back and look at a minimum response rate, he came back with fifty percent. I think it'd be helpful to hear from him as how you came to that conclusion.
Thank you. Yes, as we discussed at MSC, there were a number of things that we're looking for in this policy update. The one that this discussion revolves around is that two-thirds vote and not getting enough ballots back even after going out a second or third time to try to get additional feedback. In the gender report, we did note that the percentage of ballots returned really ranged from about forty-six percent to seventy-eight percent of those mailed out, and that's really after doing a number of rounds of outreach. So we are open to adjusting that number at, you know, at this time, if we'd like to move forward with fifty percent, or fifty percent plus one of all votes versus two-thirds of fifty percent of what comes back. I think either way, what this does, it does provide more opportunity for speed humps to be installed. They are a proven safety device, are proven to be effective at reducing speeds. They're one of the most asked-for types of devices that we get throughout the city. It's just it's very hard to meet our criteria, so we were trying to make that more accessible to everybody. We, as staff, feel that the sixty-seven percent approval of fifty percent ballots was, was a good number based on our data, but it doesn't mean that we're opposed to fifty percent plus one of, of a yes vote. It's just that, again, we don't count no votes as no's anymore. We still need that, that yes vote.
I think the policy in terms of the threshold is, I mean, I don't think that's the issue. The issue is the people who will respond and vote. Mr. Lyon, were you?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I support the recommendation, the department's recommendation. I supported the recommendation that came before. This has gone through TAC, it's gone through MSC, and now it's here. I don't know, I don't know the residents that are crying out about, furious about, about speed bumps. I heard from quite a few people about this policy. Everyone uniformly asked me to vote for it. People, what I hear is that people want, don't want cars speeding down their residential streets where their kids are playing and they're walking their dogs, and this is a way to slow people down on our neighborhood streets. I, I don't think there's a lot of data to support that, that speed bumps are particular, but traffic calming measures in general result in, in a mass overflow to other streets. It's the first argument everyone makes against any traffic calming measure, and there's not a lot of data to support it. So I very much support the recommendation. I don't think we, we have to infer anything from the non-votes. That's the nature of democracy. The people who vote get to say what happens. That's how we're all sitting here at this table, and we don't have a minimum threshold in our districts. So I think the threshold we came up with is, is good. Half the people on the street have to vote, and then two-thirds of those voting can decide. And I, I support the policy as written.
I'd second the motion, too.
I just have one clarifying question. It's not about the, speed, so there's speed tables, speed humps, and speed cushions. Are we still doing speed humps or only speed cushions and speed tables?
A speed cushion is a type of speed hump, and that's the new standard that we're using throughout the city. It provides the grooves for fire vehicles. Speed tables are still under pilot and not part of this policy, so we would come back at a later time for speed tables.
I understand. So speed, the long speed humps that everybody's used to seeing is no longer gonna happen. What we're gonna see from here on out are gonna be the individual cushions that are like three cushions, they look like pillows.
Correct. They're, they have the wheel cut out for fire, emergency response vehicles, so that is the speed cushion. That's our current design. We wouldn't go back and change the existing ones unless we're resurfacing a street, but any new locations would, would have that speed cushion design.
Okay, thank you. And nobody's found a way to take advantage of those and just go with one set of tires over it. Promise. Mr. Cole?
So, to be clear, I support the change in policy. And as the chairman noted, I went along with it because I support the change in policy, and I do think it has been well-vetted, and I do think it's a step forward. I, again, worry about what happens after speed humps are installed, and I think that Councilmember Hampton's suggestion is a good one, although if that just opens Pandora's box, we have a, we have a problem. I mean, the three complaints cause us to, maybe, maybe posting during the election makes sense, so, so that people know to, to request a ballot if they lost theirs or threw theirs away. In the interest of hopefully passing this, and if it passes without my vote, then I'm fine with that as well, let me offer a friendly amendment that we increase the minimum threshold of participation to either sixty percent or, to sixty percent or the equivalent of fifty percent of the turnout in the election to be either sixty percent or the number of yes votes to be at least forty percent. That, sixty-seven, at least forty percent of the total households. I know that sounds confusing. Let me say it again. Right now, at fifty percent, a two-thirds vote is one-third of the people on the street. I think that's a problem. I think Mr. Lyon makes a good point, that there's no minimum on elections for this body. If ten percent of the people show up to vote, somebody gets six percent of the vote, they're a member of this body. But I do think on something as sensitive as this, it will make sense for us to be able to say, there's a higher than one-third of the people. So leave it at sixty-seven percent, but at least forty percent of the, of the households be voting yes.
Yeah. The distinction, Mr. Lyon, I get what you're saying, but, you know, we're not, I mean, if voters vote us in, they could also vote us out in a couple of years. There's a little bit more permanency to a physical change to someone's street, and, you know, that's, I think that's where I would say to you the difference is. And, you know, in terms of, we may have to agree to disagree on this, but I do believe that, you know, I mean, just look at your own, our, your, meaning the collective, all of us, driving patterns. I've always said traffic is like water. You know, it will find the path of least resistance. And I challenge anyone in this room to say to me, you haven't thought about finding the path of least resistance when you're driving, whether it means taking residential streets or streets with no speed humps or, you know, no stop signs. I think maybe at least once in your commute in the last few years, you've thought about that. And so I do think there's an argument, maybe we'll just have to agree to disagree. No, sir.
I think we'll, I think we'll look at some data on the traffic is like water, is, is, there's a good deal of data to respond to that, I think, so.
Can I clarify? Can I clarify just?
Go ahead. Your math, or?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I asked not what I was gonna say.
It didn't just sound confusing, but.
It does. I know. I apologize. Let me, let me make it as simple as possible.
It's forty percent of fifty percent of twenty-two percent on a Tuesday, is what I understand.
No, no.
That's exactly what it sounded like to me.
He was like, who's on first?
Hundred houses on two blocks, right? Under the current policy, the minimum vote is sixty-seven votes. If sixty-seven people vote, and they all vote in favor of it, fine, but you have to have obviously more than, than sixty-seven votes in order to get to the sixty-seven threshold. And that's almost impossible, as it turns out, because of people who don't vote at all. So, under the proposal that's before us, the minimum number is thirty-four on, on those two blocks. I'm suggesting that it be, we leave it as sixty-seven, but there be a minimum of forty yes votes. So forty percent of the, of the households be the minimum threshold. So that's pretty simple. It's the difference between, right now it's sixty-seven, under this proposal it'd be thirty-four, under my proposal, it would be a my proposal it would be a minimum of 40 votes. It could be 90 to one, or 90 to 10, it can be 67 to 33, but the yes votes have to make up at least 40% of the households. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
So basically, 40% of the ballots that go out have to be returned in affirmative?
No, that's under this proposal, under the current proposal, 50% have to be, oh, in the affirmative. Yes, correct. Yes, correct.
So that's your amendment?
I missed your last two words.
You gotta get 40% of yes votes, and it doesn't matter how many come back.
Yes.
If it happened that 40% came back and they were all yeses, it would be a, a yes.
But, I mean, we did discuss this at MSC, and we did say that we was gonna reevaluate it after like six months. So I, I mean, I'm still comfortable supporting the.
It's a friendly amendment. If you don't accept it, I understand.
And, and part of, in addition to this, is that we was gonna do more outreach in different languages, 'cause a lot of residents were not returning a ballot, 'cause, you know, we just wasn't meeting their preferred language, and so there was a barrier to that as well.
So would, could I add an amendment? If that's okay. And I don't have an amendment on the, the math percentages. It's not gonna be a math contest here. Just that we notify, the way, the same way, you know, you can't park on the street, there's some very visible notification that ballots are going out, check your mail.
That we can do, yes.
Thank you.
I, I think, I mean, you mentioned 60 days, and I was going to suggest it should be during the voting process.
Yeah, prior to the, you know, when the ballot goes out.
You know, maybe put out the, the electronic sign to notify people that the vote is happening, because 60 days out, we've already let contracts, we've, you know, the, that.
No, no, 60 days is off the table.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
Councilmember Cole brought up a great idea. It was like, or someone said, why not before the ballots even go out, so that we're advertising it? I was only put in the 60 days prior to, just in case someone had issues with it. But, yeah, before.
Any further, oh, Ms. Rivas?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm supportive of the motion, supporter of the friendly amendment. I think the key piece that we don't see in the staff report, or it sounds like there was discussion, but that's why I support the friendly amendment, is just the outreach piece. I think right now in my district, the streets that have done it, they really go all out. It is a really intensive effort, and which is a good result, 'cause you know people are really motivated, really invested in it. But it, it's a lot of work, so doing the outreach, helping with outreach is gonna make a big difference, so I appreciate everyone's attention to that. Thank you.
And one quick item is the mailing of the ballots, 'cause we know from the city clerk's office, you're doing, obviously the city clerk's doing an audit, but there's some city mail that hasn't reached every residential unit in the city. And so we need to make sure that we're very thorough about mailing out ballots to each unit within that block or that, that segment that's petitioning for the speed hump.
Yes, that's one of the things that we're looking at with the mailers, is making sure that the addresses that we've mailed them to make sense. If we get any returned ballots for undeliverables, we'll check and see why that address was returned. Maybe it's a different address, or maybe that address doesn't exist, but, but we're trying to prove that process to make sure that everybody gets a paper ballot, gets it in multiple languages. And now we will also be doing some notification when the ballots go out, public notification so people can see it through some kind of signage on that street that there is a ballot out.
Last question. Do we do this digitally as well? Have we thought about that?
We've traditionally just done paper ballots to be able to get them back that way, so that we can verify that it was, the ballot that was mailed out is, is coming back from the address.
I'll tell you this, just as one individual, right? I mean, I guess I'm considered a millennial. I, the mail that I get in my home is pretty much just coupons. Everything else is done digitally. My bills don't come to me, it's all digital. I don't get that in the mail. So if I get a, a letter from the city of Pasadena, I mean, I'm looking at it because it comes in our packages, right? But, but I'm saying, the average person is not opening them, right? They're just not opening them. They're just saying, I'm not gonna open that, because everything I get is digital. So, I mean, so we should look at when that notification goes out, some sort of digital way, and in a way that the individual can identify, you know, this is my address, et cetera. Because even, you know, with fraud, someone would say, well, that, that opens up the door for anyone to vote, right, and put any address in. You could do that now. Right? You could technically get a ballot from someone's mailbox and vote in affirmative, or vote in favor or vote against.
I'm gonna remind us that we're still on consent calendar on the first item pulled. There's a speed bump.
Call the question.
And so, are there, we have a motion in a second, are there objections?
This is for the staff recommendation without the friendly amendments.
What was the friendly amendment? I think we were good with the, with the.
With the outreach?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The signage on the street, I think, is important and, and, and a really rigorous outreach. That's what I would say.
Okay.
So that was the friendly amendment? Okay. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Cole?
Unbalanced, yes.
Councilmember Hampton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Lyon?
Yes.
Councilmember Madison?
Yes.
Councilmember Masuda? Vice Mayor Rivas?
Yes.
Mayor Gordo?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Item seven, Mr. Cole?
Um, let's see, uh...
Chances, or?
No, not, I'm sorry. Seven was a mistake. I did not mean to call seven.
Eight.
Motion to move approval of item number seven?
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the staff recommendation.
Any objections? See, none, matters approved?
I apologize, I was, I was looking at six and eight, and seven got mixed up in there.
Okay.
On number eight, again, I had a difference of perspective from my colleagues on MSC, although we're all thinking in the same regard, all of us who were present wanna see this policy changed. I wanted to go further. Right now, you can size up to 150% of your current use, and if you wanna go above 150% under this policy change, then you need to install batteries. The problem with that is the batteries are very expensive. They make a lot of sense, but we, we have not yet created an incentive program to help people to invest in batteries. And so we need between 90 and 120 megawatts of local solar. And putting them on people's rooftops, individual homes, as well as businesses, make a lot of sense. And given that people are buying electric cars, people are increasingly electrifying, as I have, their appliances and their heating and air conditioning, I think that 200% makes more sense. If we wanna come back and revisit when we get a battery incentive and, and really incentivize batteries, I think that makes a lot of sense, and I understand why the staff recommended it. But I think until we have that battery incentive to ask people to put in very expensive battery systems, not that we'll pay for 100% of it, but we should, we should find a way either to finance it or, or some kind of credits. But in the meantime, I think it's unreasonable to limit to just 150%. It's not a do or die issue, but I think it is an important, and, and the, the chances of abuse, whatever that looks like, are so miniscule. The number of people that are gonna spend the money to go above 150% are the people who are not trying to make a buck off of the city. They're people who legitimately think, I'm gonna buy an electric car, or I'm gonna convert. And, and so that's, that's my view, and I wanted to put it on the record and see if any of my colleagues not on MSC share those concerns.
I will second that if that is a motion, and I'm fine with, I prefer the more, I think that anybody wants to put any solar on their home, we should allow them to do that. If they wanna disconnect from the grid, we should allow them to do that as well. And so if you're able to produce 200% of your usage, maybe you'll eventually decide to disconnect from the grid. To Councilmember Cole's point about the, how much batteries cost, depending on how you're doing your solar installation, adding 50% more could be equivalent to the cost of your battery. So I, I, I do think that residents should have the option to go to 200% they like, but I would encourage them to, and I would encourage Water and Power to come up with some sort of incentive to give our residents to, to really invest in battery storage.
Well, not to be preemptory here, but I, I will make a motion to that effect with the following provisions. Number one, that we adopt the recommendation from MSC. Number two, that we raise the threshold from 150 to 200% to be revisited when and if we move forward with battery incentives. And number three, that this apply not just to new systems, but to upgrades of existing systems. That's my motion.
I thought, I just seconded it, so, I mean, I, I seconded it before, but it's all good.
Okay. Works. Um, Mr. Madison?
Thanks, Mayor. Mr. Hampton was talking about making a buck, but is this a revenue generator for the resident?
If, if it potentially is.
They sell back.
It potentially is, if they are producing more than they consume.
Is that a policy change?
It is a slight policy shift, I would say, from where the existing policy exists today, which is to try to match the solar system to the residents' needs in terms of their actual usage.
Are residents today receiving checks from the city for power?
Some do.
Okay. Yeah, that's problematic, because, you know, there've been some subsidies of those systems by the city and other levels of government. So I wasn't aware of that. I have solar in my home, but we don't get checks from the city, certainly never expected. And I never got a rebate, too. I never applied for them. So that's a significant policy judgment, I think, if we're gonna turn residents into producers. I'm not opposed to it necessarily, but I think that needs some discussion. And then my understanding was, I mean, I liked the staff recommendation, because what we really need is storage. Need to have storage so that we've got the capacity when we need it, even if we're not able to generate it in that moment. So I read the staff recommendation to be, you can get more, but it'll be tied to a storage mechanism. So for me, that's a good policy. And it's hard, you know, at 8:30 at night for eight of us to tinker with really well-reasoned professional staff policy judgments that have already, all these arguments were made at MSC unsuccessfully, apparently, by Mr. Cole. So I'm gonna stick with the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Mayor, I don't know that it's helpful, but I would just remind the council that the council did approve a budget that includes a rebate program, and we're in the process of developing that implementation. So there's money there for a rebate program for batteries, battery storage, and we hope to roll that out in the next three months.
And David, could you clarify the fund that that's coming out of?
It's from the PBC fund?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Public benefit.
Yeah, so it doesn't affect the ratepayer.
And I'm not, this is sort of without prejudice to future adjustments upwards, and I'm not hearing staff say otherwise in terms of the, the generation piece, but I think it's a, it's a good balance of focusing on more generation and more storage. I think we need to catch up with storage if we can, as it were.
Mr. Jones, followed by Ms. Rivas.
Thanks, Mayor. And that's precisely the discussion we had at MSC. This is, again, responding to residents who wanna get the, the solar credit before it expires or the federal government takes it away, and allowing them to build out some additional capacity, maybe in the future they're gonna get one EV. And so we came to the conclusion that 150% of their existing usage was a fair and balanced approach, part of the staff recommendation. And Mr. Cole did raise these concerns, and, and, you know, we thoroughly discussed it. And my recollection was, is that we would kind of, the, the general manager would get a sense of the applications coming in, and then if, you know, if people are saying, hey, I want 200%, then general manager would come back to MSC and we'd have that further discussion. But it, part of that was that we are encouraging solar storage, 'cause we do know that we need our residents to help us meet our carbon-free goals with solar and with storage. And so that was part of the, the balanced discussion we had at MSC. And so I'm prepared to support the staff's recommendation, the recommendation that we had at MSC, but I'm also prepared to, to have a further discussion on Mr. Cole and Mr. Hampton's motion.
If that's a substitute motion, I would second it.
Yeah. Substitute motion.
The, the issue of, I'm sorry, Ms. Rivas, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question, 'cause I, I wasn't following the discussions at MSC, and I appreciate the overview we've gotten here, but, and as a, just from the perspective of residents, what I've heard, the move to 200% over 150 is something that I've seen a call for, a desire for, there's a desire for, to be able to do more. What's the department's response? What is the concern? That, I feel like we haven't heard that piece of it yet. Why, why did the department recommend 150 over 200?
Yeah, so what, what we've looked at, and, and again, the, the existing ordinance and policy really speak to trying to size the solar system to the customer's needs, so that whatever is generated or used is paid for. It's offset. Basically, the solar system would offset the, the needs of the customer, and so basically you're not paying for electricity. And what we've heard is that our existing policy of looking at annual usage is somewhat restrictive and doesn't allow customers to right-size for the future. They're gonna buy an EV, they're gonna do an addition, maybe they're gonna grow their family. And 150% is what we recommended, just sort of as a matter of right. That accounts for about one EV, a little bit more than one EV from our, from our math. And then the thinking was beyond that, if you wanna go beyond 150, you, you certainly can, but we'd like you to install a battery. And the OSP, although it's not done, our carbon-free goals in the city are gonna require our residents to, to help out, and, and batteries are a great way of doing that. And that, that was the staff thinking.
And is it a concern from the department or the city, that if a home has more capacity than it needs, and then the city has to buy it back? Is that a financial concern from the department's perspective? Is that, is that where this is, what's driving this?
Yeah, so, so the time of use rates that we've been talking about with council, with MSC, within the OSP, once we have our AMI, we think we're gonna be able to address that. Right now, we're not able to. In other words, buying back power at 12:00 PM, when we don't need it, at, at a premium cost, it doesn't make a lot of sense for anybody. But, but if a customer has a battery, they can basically store that energy that's not needed at 12, and they can either use it themselves, or they can sell it back to the city at a premium. So financial analysis was not part of this discussion. I can tell you that it would be certainly part of something in the future. We've talked about it with the time of use rates and what that looks like in terms of how much the city would, would actually, how much we're paying for power versus how much we're buying from our, our customers. But the 150 versus 200, and when the battery is required, you know, I think staff would, would follow whatever council's direction was.
Thank you for that explanation. Appreciate it.
We also have public comment.
In, in the issue of, of whether, you know, the city would buy back, that was heavily debated when, when we went forward, and it was a concern that people would, you know, make it a profit center, or that businesses would make it a profit center. Where we landed on it at the time was, well, you know, we are interested is in, in having no carbon footprint, and so that was a price to pay at the time.
Yeah.
For allowing residents to, to collect.
Right. I appreciate hearing that as well. It, it seems like the, the technology or batteries is not there yet, or rather, the cost of batteries is not there yet to make them widely available, so we have this mismatch between the panels and the batteries. And I don't see it as folks, you know, trying to game the system, trying to make a profit. It's just the nature of that imbalance right now, where there's gonna be excess at certain points of the day, until we correct that, until, or until there's more batteries. So I appreciate, again, hearing what the logic was with the batteries.
The other, I just wanna add, and Brujav would probably do a lot better than me, but just to share, it really does help with demand on the grid as well. The, the batteries do help alleviate load. And I don't know if Mr. Avadian, if you wanted to say a little bit more about that?
Yes, thank you, David. Brujav Avadian, Assistant General Manager for Power Delivery Division. In addition to the financial... In addition to the financial aspects of it and us, and the customers needing the batteries, I mean, uh, David mentioned the imbalance, like in the middle of the day, there's, we have excess solar. And that excess solar that comes back to our grid has an impact on our grid. It can increase voltage, it can overlook, uh, overload equipment, and we have been upgrading our system for years. This was the first year we created a specific CIP to capture the cost, to give us transparency and the public transparency, how much, as far as how much we're spending. So our concern for going anything over 150 is that that impact on our distribution system is gonna be greater. So we wanna be really cautious as far as what we do. We can certainly, uh, be back at council at a later date if we see, uh, what it is as far as financial impact on our distribution system, not the rates, uh, but we, uh, we can, we can report back to council as far as what, uh, what we see.
Yeah. You know, the, the debate at the time was heavily around, we still have to pay for the distribution system and, and so that was part of the, the, the balance we were, the council at that time was attempting to strike. Let me suggest that maybe, uh, since we have a substitute motion, um, that we support the substitute motion with an amendment to send the issues raised by Mr. Hampton and Mr. Cole, uh, back to MSC for more thinking and then come back to us. But, um...
We still have public comment.
Oh, uh, we still have public comment, and I see, uh, Mr. Lyon, uh, Mr. Madison and then Mr. Cole are, are back in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, we did go around and around about this. The batteries are an incredibly important piece of converting solar into a resource that we can use around the clock. But in some ways, th- this number is squishy and maybe a little arbitrary. I wonder if there's not a compromise position to get to here, which is that we set the, the entitlement at 150%? And then to go over, you either have a battery system or demonstrate a need for, and, which is to show I'm actually purchasing a, or I have purchased, uh, a second EV. Um, but you can either, either get a battery system or demonstrate a need, and then you can go to your need over 150%. That may be able to bridge this together. It's unfortunate we're coming to this discussion now. It's a little piecemeal. We, we're, we're just about to get to adopting the OSP. We know that solar is the critical component in getting over the 100% goal. But we also are running up against the clock of the, of the federal incentive running out at the end of the year, and so we're trying to create what we can, a mechanism to incentivize people to move now if they wanna do that. Um, so it, it, I, we need to get something passed tonight, um, and I'm, I'm happy to, to compromise on how we do it. I don't wanna totally undermine batteries, but the, if, if the, if that system could work, we can kinda meet both.
So is that a friendly amendment? Oh.
I always just wanna clarify, um, what if a resident already had an EV? Would that qualify them to get the 200%?
Well, no, they're gonna get to, so they get to go to 150% of their, of their load for the last five years? Is that how we do it? So we look at, at, average from the last five years? They, they get to go to 150% of that. To go over that, they either have to demonstrate an actual need, which might be another EV.
Right.
It might be, uh, they're expanding the house. Um, I don't know what other need you might have, but, but, um, either an actual need or a battery system.
So your EV now, at least newer EVs, act as a battery system? So I, my question is, would that contemplate, or maybe I should ask the general manager, me having a EV that could generate power back to my home, which most EVs have this capability now?
No.
And any EV, I think any EV has the ability to do this with a device. Would that consider me as having a, um, a battery?
That doesn't get back to the grid just yet. So the, the point of the battery is it would be connected to the grid, and so, um, we, we hope to get there. Uh, and, and I believe actually we will get there. We're, we're not there yet where the, the car batteries would serve as, uh, interconnected to the grid. But it, it certainly has, everything that you said, I, I believe is true. They can, if you hook it up correctly, you can, uh, help power your home, but it wouldn't get back to the grid.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. Mr. Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd really just wanna follow up. So did I hear that we're buying power that we can't use right now? From residents?
We, under our existing net energy metering system, we, we do purchase excess power, um, from, from our customers that have solar, where they're generating more than they, uh, than they use.
Even at non-peak time when we don't need it?
That, yeah, we, without consideration of time.
Yeah, that's a problem. I mean, that's a, it's, it's a problem just 'cause I don't know that we understand what the economics of that are, why we're doing that. So, and, you know, my experience is batteries are already, the prices are coming down and they're gonna proliferate. So I, I really feel like that's where our focus should be. Um, and I would actually like to see a, maybe a, just a written report about, you know, what, and how much money are we spending? And are we, are we, is that taxable income to the resident? Are we, are we issuing 1099s? Um, what's happening there?
It's in the form of credit usually, um, if they're generating more, and so, um...
Well, the credit's different. And if, if what you're telling me is we're just rolling that into their yearly or some other measurement of, of power, I think that might be okay. Because then they're still just getting the benefit of what they're using.
Yeah. The, the existing, uh, regulations call for a credit, and in some instances, they're still generating more than, than what their usage is. On, on a rare occasion, I know that we, we have issued checks before.
Then we cut a check. So again, is that a taxable event? Are we issuing a 1099?
We, we are not issuing 1099.
I, I don't know why not. That should be taxable income probably, right? I mean, this needs more study than a 9:00 PM city council, you know, session. So I, I'd like to get a report, you know, just offline from staff about all that. Thank you.
No pun intended. Offline. Um, yeah, not, not peak hour. Uh, we do have public comment.
Which is the staff recommendation.
Ms. Clerk? Um, Mr. Cole was in the queue, but I'll...
I'll, I'll defer till after public comment.
Sandy Krasner? And, uh, I believe Yadi put in a public comment card for this as well.
Hi there.
Two minutes. Go ahead.
Two minutes, okay. As I understand, politics is the art of the possible, right? Um, so I think tonight, it certainly makes sense to go ahead with the staff proposal for 150% batteries above that. I think, a- as you've seen, there's a certain sense of urgency. We got a deadline coming up at the end of the year because of what the administration has done to solar panel credits. Let's move out with this as you've got it now. I didn't wanna address Mr. Madison's question. I don't know what the statistics are on PWP, but I suspect there's not a lot of people out there making a million dollars a year being power generators. There might be a few people that are making a couple of bucks on the side, but I suspect that's not really the concern. One big thing to keep in mind here, sort of referring to something else that you, that you're working on right now, um, certainly as Mr. Reyes, uh, said, battery storage is coming. There's a, there's a, part of the, the plan is to put in 125 megawatts, which I think is 500 megawatt hours of batteries at, at Glen Arm. It's really important that you proceed with the optimized strategic plan, which should be putting together the whole story for how much, um, how much storage are we gonna have at Glen Arm? How much rooftop solar are we gonna have? How are you going to incentivize people for rooftop solar? If we had the optimized strategic plan, presumably all this would come together, and there'd be an understanding of how all the pieces fit together. But for now, we got the street, the, the, what do they call it? The urgency that we gotta get this one going, and then we can come back and revisit it. Okay? Thank you very much.
Uh, Yadi?
I just wanna say I appreciate the many discussions that there's been. As you probably already know, I'm a big proponent of clean energy. I drive EV, I have solar. Actually, I picked the house that I live in right now because it already had panels, and my lease is already over, and I'm kinda stuck in no man's land when I'm trying to figure out how to upgrade. But because we're stuck in this conversation, I, um, I'm, I'm stuck at trying to make a decision. And for example, what you guys were like saying to look at the past power usage, that would be difficult, for example, in my, um, in, in my scenario where I don't use my gas stove because it's gas, and I try not to use my gas dryer because it's gas. And I would like to upgrade my other appliances to example, for example, using a heat pump. And so looking retroactively at my past power use wouldn't, uh, help me or be able to qualify for that. And the 150, I think, is good if that's what you settle on, and possibly I would ask maybe to look at 200% or giving the flexibility of people to be able to have a discussion with the city staff on being able to look at a, a special accommodation. But again, just appreciate and the urgency. And again, I, I have an EV because I was able to take advantage of the tax credits, and I would to, try to take advantage of other programs that are available, um, as much as possible. But that's what we would need, our rebates and incentives to do that. Thank you.
That completes public comment on this item.
Okay. Uh, so where are we? Uh, Mr. Jones, you're in the, Mr. Cole, followed by Mr. Jones.
Yeah. Good.
So I, I apologize that, um, we seem to be arguing over a relatively, um, small difference and that, um, philosophically, I think we're all aligned. I agree with Councilmember Madison. We want batteries, we wanna incentivize batteries. We're talking about a handful of people who are going to take advantage of, of this under any circumstances, right? It's probably less than 100 will, will actually be under this policy before we have batteries. And we're, what is our annual electric sales? Mr. Rivas? Or, Mr. Reyes?
I have that number. Just give me one second, please.
I don't have that data.
I, yes. I also misgendered you, so, uh, my apologies. Yeah. Um, but it's, I think, my memory is it's 80 million, but, um, we're talking, um, I mean, the, the concerns about, uh, this, this, this is less than a rounding error. Philosophically, the reality is that we need 90 to 120 megawatts of solar, and we need a similar amount of battery. And some of it's gonna be on people's rooftops, and some of it's gonna be municipal. But we need to be moving forward on it. I would rather err on the side of encouraging as much solar as possible. I am strongly in favor of, um, supporting batteries, but I think, um, that, rather than think about how little we can do, I think we should be focused on how much we can do, uh, given the, the stakes and given the timeline. We have five years to get to 2030 and get to 100%. So, um, I will not support the substitute motion, but I understand, um, the, you know, on this issue, I, I think we're not all that far apart.
Yep. 2030. Mr. Jones?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, Brujan, could you remind us why you recommended 150% and not 200%?
Sure. Uh, as Mr. Reyes mentioned, uh... What did this go? It's on there. Sorry. Yeah. Yeah. Um, so as Mr. Reyes mentioned, the discussions we had, we had numerous discussions about this topic, and the conclusion that came, we came up with is that the additional 50% is approximately equal to one electric vehicle. So if a household doesn't have an electric vehicle, we consider that, like, added that 50% to that, which is 150%. One thing I wanna emphasize is all the percentages that we're talking about, whatever it is, whether it's 140, 150, 200, whatever it is, they have a real impact on our distribution system. I wanna emphasize that fact, that whatever we do, any excess solar coming to our system has an impact. Some areas will not have much, as much impact as other areas, but they do have an impact.
Okay. Thank you. So, um, shall we vote on the substitute motion and then see where we go? I like Mr. Lyons, but I, if there's no uptake on that.
What was Mr. Lyons? What was, you said to go to 200%, but you have to prove that you're getting the EV?
Just the, oh, to go over 150, you either have to, you either have to have a battery or demonstrate an actual need for, for more, and then you can do more. Sort of blends the two.
Prove it up.
I could support that.
I support that. I mean, if you, I mean, if the, if that's a substitute, substitute.
Well, let's see if the substitute, the maker of the motion would...
I think you get one substitute, right?
Well, no, you can make it a friendly amendment.
That's what I was proposing.
To the substitute, yeah. I'm amendable to that. I'd like to hear Mr. Reyes and your team's take.
Yeah. If, if the thinking was by demonstrating actual need, it's, um, you know, they're doing an ADU, and it's not just like, I'm thinking about doing ADU, but I'm, here's, I have Plan Check in, I have a, you know, I'm, I'm making actual steps towards an ADU where I have a new demand. I think that makes a lot of sense. Uh, here's registration, I'm, you know, I'm, I've purchased an EV versus like, I think I'm gonna get an EV in the future. And the way that we've outlined it is the 150% to sort of right-size your system, and then a battery. I think what I hear Mr. Lyons saying is, that's fine, but what if someone also says, look, here's my registration, I've got another EV, I need more than 150%? And I think that...
That's what I'm talking about.
I have an EV on the way, or I'm getting ready to...
I do, electric appliances are on the way, so...
So it's basically...
I got a EV on the way.
It's basically actual demand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that's already in the motion. So the, the second part of the motion is to allow greater than 150%, um, provided that such installations do not exceed 1 megawatt or paired with an energy storage system, which I'm hearing could be a new EV or a battery system, and subject to localized grid distribution efficiency. And this is critical because i- if we're gonna set up a system where we're buying power that we can't use and that, that strains our, our distribution system, that's crazy talk. So I'm com- I'm comfortable with the, uh, staff recommendation, which already offers those things and, and the...
It doesn't offer the, the overreach?
I think the difference, the difference is, if I may, is that if we wanna, if a resident wants to go from 150 to 200 because they're gonna purchase a second electric vehicle, they would have to prove to David and his team that they have a registration or they just purchased the vehicle and they need that additional, uh, s- capacity. And I think that's what Mr. Lyons is saying. So I, I think that's a little different from what's in here, which in that point, you're saying that that's fine as long as they are for sure gonna have the EV by the time the, of the installation of the solar.
What it lets us do is know that there's not gonna be excess generation that's not stored. So if they have excess generation over the 150%, it's because they're using it.
We're meeting their need.
And then if you're, if you don't need it, then you gotta be storing it. So it sort of accomplishes both goals.
Yeah, I'm, I'm struggling with, um, how that's not in Part B. And to me, the...
Part B is only about the battery. It's not about your excess need.
But the, the EV is a battery.
Yep.
No.
EV is not a battery, actually.
They're saying it's not a battery.
It's not a battery.
That, I mean, the technology, it is a battery, but, um, that's where the technology is, but they're saying that they're not, they're not recognizing that.
Okay. Even for, even for the home, you're not recognizing that as a storage system that the home can use?
Yeah, from, from our perspective, in terms of looking at the, the reasons that Mr. Evadian, uh, talked about, the, the number and the reason for the battery storage is really to help protect the grid and also to, uh, to offset some of, uh, the demand that we need at the peak time. So, uh, and the car batteries just aren't there yet for, to help the grid.
Okay. And does the motion, the amendment, do the amendment include grid sufficiency as being a factor? Or is...
Yeah, all of the other technical...
Yeah.
Pieces that are here, but need to remain.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I would accept the amendment then to the substitute, if that's the intent.
It's just a addition, right? Yeah.
Yeah. Mark, do you have that?
It was a lot, Mark.
It is a lot.
It's just a addition, right? Yeah.
Mark, do you have that?
It was a lot, Mark.
It is a lot. Uh, also to make a note, the, we've distributed a revised resolution. The, it's a revision to, um, page two of the resolution, uh, item number one in the resolution, second line, and it's to remove the word "new." So I think this addresses the, to apply to existing and not just new solar systems. So that's resolutions in front of you. It's an amended resolution. So I would assume that that's part of the...
That is, yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay. All set?
So to vote on the...
So... Vote on the substitute motion as amended? Are there objections? Okay. Thank you. Matter passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for your input and participation and patience.
You're on to...
You don't look as charged up as I thought you would be. Pun intended. Okay.
We're on to item eleven.
All right, all right. I'll keep, I'll keep both my day jobs. Next, next matter is item eleven.
And there are eleven speaker cards on item eleven.
The mayor had to step out for a moment, but I believe...
I think we lost our quorum.
Oh, did we also lose our quorum as well?
No, we have five.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Thank you.
So we can continue. I believe we'll start with the staff recommendation on this item?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Item eleven?
Given the hour, we're, we have a presentation teed up, where if you'd like to have questions or we can...
Yeah. What's the will of the council on this item? And, uh, Councilmember Hampton, this is in your district, so let's look to you first.
Yes, I've gone through this thoroughly, and, um, I do have some questions. I don't know if everybody needs a presentation on it. If we don't need a presentation, I can go straight into the questions.
Yeah. I think that's appropriate, so thank you.
Okay. First and foremost, I want to thank staff for doing all the work and making sure that we got all the legal, um, I's dotted and T's crossed, um, for the process. Now, part of the, um, staff report, it recommends demolishing the buildings.
Yes, sir.
As a part of the RFP, so, so I'll just start off with, why don't we make that the onus of whoever is awarded the RFP to do a, um, I guess, a building analysis to see if the, if the buildings actually need to be demolished and have them pay for their own, um, structural engineer, et cetera, to go out to, to check to see if those buildings need to be demolished?
Councilmember Hampton, that, that is an option available to the council if that is a direction. Our direct, our recommendation to demolish the buildings is more a result of the recent assessment done by our city's risk management team, safety officer and the visit and the all the, the, the conditions of the buildings that were further deteriorated from back when it was adopted in two thousand and ten. That's the reason why the city's position, the staff's recommendation, is to look at demolishing the building to, to open the opportunity for a new construction that can probably better suit the proposals that are going to be coming forward.
I think that, um, we would only get a few proposals if we demolish all the buildings because whatever organization comes forward would have to have multi, millions upon millions of dollars to be able to, to do the work that we would like to see in this, um, in this place. I think that onus, even if another organization has millions and millions of dollars and they say, we want to try, we want to demolish all these buildings and start afresh, that's their option. But I think any other organization that's going to apply for this RFP should have the option to look at the buildings that are existing to see if they are able to refurbish those in any way. So that would be one of the items, um, that I would ask, uh, you, my colleagues, um, to just make the onus on whoever is the awardee of the RFP. The other, um, piece is, in your staff report, it says that RFP is going to take twelve months?
Yes. We, uh, we estimate about six months to prepare the RFP process, have it reviewed by multiple departments, and ensure it is prepared and everything is captured. And the release and the process of receiving the RFPs, reviewing, doing the interviews of the proposers, we're estimating between six months for the first portion, six months for the other, about one year overall.
I think that that is a very prolonged period of time. And we mentioned this at, um, finance, at least I mentioned it at finance. And I said that a lot of the work has already been done, and there's been a lot of work towards this. It seems like we've been talking about this building or these structures, um, for the past three years or so. And so because we have so much work, and you guys have already done all the work to talk to all the different departments, you talked to, um, the water board, et cetera, to make sure that this could all be approved now that we've gotten this far, um, I would like to see, um, a RFP issued within the next ninety days. That would be... No, no. And, and those are my two, um, issues with the staff's proposal. Or, or, I mean, if it's not ninety days, you let me know. I mean, it seems like we're able to get RFPs out in ninety days. That seems like the, the going, and that was what was brought up in finance, according to my notes that I wrote on the day that we talked in finance. Can you hold that thought? Because I want to make sure I, we didn't just make a mistake. Given the importance of item fourteen, the fire, um, uh, issue, um, the, because of the late hour, I don't, I, I think it's best to put it off for a couple of weeks, allow public comment, um, to go forward. So we would allow public comment to go forward and then take the matter up.
Just to clarify, item fourteen is the fire department's plan, not, not this item?
The fire department, the...
Informational item.
It's an informational item, not for action.
It's not, it's not this item?
It's not this item.
It is item fourteen. It is the fire department's ten-year strategic plan and, and, and look forward. That's the last item. It's an informational item? I, it's not this item?
Yeah.
Seeing your looks.
Yeah. It's not this item.
We're on item eleven right now.
Yeah.
We're saying item fourteen is not happening. We're on eleven right now.
And, and we have...
Fourteen is not happening. We're on eleven right now. Fourteen's not happening.
And fourteen is also an important issue, and I don't want us to give it, you know, short trip. I think we should have fresh minds and...
And, and so there are five public comment cards submitted for item fourteen on the fire department. If you are here for that...
We can hear.
We can hear your public comments after we get to that item, and it's going to come back in the future. So you can wait...
Near future.
Near future.
A few weeks. It's a couple of weeks.
You can wait until we get to item fourteen, when we're going to continue it to another meeting, or you can, um, come back when it's back on the agenda.
I, I just don't want people to wait, um, and then the matter's put off because of the hour. So I apologize. So with that, um... Back to item eleven.
Item eleven, we could do that.
The other, oh, so there were only two things that I had mentioned about the staff report, otherwise I'm supportive of it.
I've noted them, Councilman Redd.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, do you want to do public comment?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll do public comment on item eleven. Dr. Treasure Shepherd, followed by Charles Thomas, followed by Brandon Hammerly, followed by Jackie Hensy. If you hear your name, come forward. Is Dr. Treasure Shepherd here? Okay. You're Charles Thomas?
I am Charles Thomas.
Great. Welcome, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you.
You have two minutes. Go ahead.
Way to avert a small riot. That was really smart of you to clarify that. Thank you. This is eleven. All right. So tonight, we're going to be voting on this RFP that is pretty important to a lot of people, as you can see. And it's important because it's going to have profound impacts on workforce development, providing jobs, promoting environmental and, uh, um, racial justice, addressing climate change, and creating major opportunities for community healing. The restoration of the Hahamanga Annex and Creek are two ideas whose time has come. And to quote Victor Hugo, nothing is as powerful as an idea whose time has arrived. These are community, uh, solutions addressing systemic social problems. And the need for a conservation job training center, the need for green, more green space, the need for community healing is immediate. These are today's problems that will eventually become tomorrow's crisis if they're not addressed. And as Dr. King often described it, they're, this is the type of need that's also referred to as the fierce urgency of now. So before you vote yes to the staff recommendation, please consider amending the motion to consider these three things. One, as noted in items number two and five of the staff recommendation, uh, asking the council to authorize the demolition of six buildings, please allow a comprehensive feasibility study to make the definitive, uh, determination for demolition. Now, um, I don't try to brag much, but I am internationally known as a leader in environmental education and, uh, mission excellence. And I can assure you that the existing layout of those buildings, of the annex buildings, are perfectly set up to develop a world-class environmental education center. Uh, and regarding, uh, the last item, referring to the one-year timing of the RFP, now, I've worked at three federal agencies. I'm almost done here. I've worked at the Army Corps of Engineers, I've worked at the Forest Service, and I've worked at the National Park Service. And each of these agencies, I've always had an input on developing RFPs. Now, we know the federal government is notoriously slow for, uh, getting stuff done and moving at a glacial pace. Well, when we worked, when I worked on these RFPs, they typically got these RFPs out in ninety days, or no longer than six months for projects, much longer than...
Mr...
The, the annex.
Mr. Time...
I'm, I'm wrapping right now. So it should take about three months. And, um, with the amount of information studies and documents that have already been written, and if it does take more than that, then I would highly recommend that you either give Mr. Penosian more staff, or you give him new staff. So I appreciate the time, and I appreciate you guys' consideration on this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brandon Hammerly? Followed by Jack Hensy, and then Dave Wieschoff?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brandon Hammerly. I am the project manager for Creek, the Climate Resilience Environmental Education Center, working for OBA. I just want to clarify, from the last time we were here, those questions about who is the lead organization. Outward Bound Adventures is the lead organization, um, for this Creek initiative. Okay? So just want to make sure that's really clear. We're responsible for managing the project. We're responsible for responding to the RFP, carrying it through a feasibility study, and ensuring it has sustainable political and financial support. So I want to tell you, you all, a little bit about the political and financial support we currently already have before this RFP is released. We have secured the following support. The Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy has promised a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant to fund the feasibility study and the planning of the Creek project if OBA is awarded and becomes the tenant under the RFP. Senator Perez and Assembly Member Harbedian have jointly submitted a letter to the state legislator to support, in support of this project, and have requested a direct allocation of three million dollars to fund the Creek Initiative from Prop IV funding. So we have right here a joint letter from Harbedian as well as Perez. It's in the legislature as we speak. We submitted a public access grant to the State Wildlife Conservation Board for three-point-five million dollars. It is currently also being considered, um, with the pending of the release of this RFP. Um, we have also met with and engendered the support of Susie Niemer and Supervisor Catherine Berger, um, and they will be supporting our submission of a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant, uh, for planning and design under their RPUSD. Um, so, we've been busy, okay? Getting a lot of support for this initiative. I'm really worried about the momentum of it, um, getting a road, a roadblock, a speed bump, if you will, um, because of this RFP taking so long. So a whole year, all of that amazing support that we have right now, all that momentum we have, I'm worried about a year-long RFP really derailing some of that.
Mr. Hammerly?
So just please act on that, uh, excitement that's happening. Please don't, um, miss the opportunities that are before you. I want you all to be champions of this. You have a great chance.
Jackie Hensy?
I'm going to introduce Jackie, and she's going to tell you a little bit about how we want to go about this, uh...
Followed by Dave Wieschoff, followed by Emily Hopkins, and then Heavenly Hughes.
And I'd like to request that Tristan Walker go behind me in the order. We submitted his card, um, if that's okay?
I'll say it's okay.
It's fine. I don't see Mr. Walker, but I'll, uh, refresh. Maybe it's there. Go ahead. You have two minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Jackie Hensy. I'm representing Stainer Architects, and so is Tristan, in a pro bono capacity to offer our professional opinion in support of transforming the Hahamanga Annex into Creek's vision for an environmental education center and a living resource for our community. I'd specifically like to present our findings on the condition of the annex buildings and implore the council to consider adaptive reuse. With imagination, these buildings can be transformed into a modern, code-compliant, and usable environmental education center. Viability of reuse has been confirmed by a licensed structural engineer, Matthew Melnick of Noose Engineering, and we performed an initial lifecycle analysis. Our investigation confirms that this project is not only viable from structural and layout perspectives, but offers significant environmental benefits relating to greenhouse gas emissions and solid waste reductions. A building's initial construction emits more greenhouse gas emissions than during its entire operational lifespan. It can take up to eighty years for energy reduction strategies to overcome this initial carbon impact. These buildings already exist, and the carbon from their construction is in the atmosphere. Earth has paid the carbon price for these structures. Our responsibility is to reuse what we have and consider new construction when there's no other viable choice. By reusing just the concrete walls and foundations, we conserve three-hundred-and-seventeen metric tons of carbon dioxide that's equivalent to the annual energy usage of a hundred-and-thirty-nine typical Pasadena homes, or the carbon absorbed by three-hundred-and-eighteen acres of U.S. forests in one year. In addition, reusing these structures will divert nine-hundred-and-sixty-eight tons of solid waste from landfills and the associated carbon emissions from hauling and dumping. We're confident the existing masonry walls and foundations can be repurposed to meet our, meet or exceed the structural provisions of the two-thousand-and-twenty-five California Building Code. The buildings are well-suited for selective demolition to transform the annex into something entirely new. This could involve expanding openings for more natural light...
Ms. Hensy, your time has expired.
Raising the ceiling heights and incorporating a new roof to join existing structures to create outdoor classrooms. Thank you.
So I'm going to pull Tristan Walker out of the order. And we don't generally do that. Followed by Dave Wieschoff, then Emily Hopkins.
Please step forward if you hear your name.
Thank you for the flexibility. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Tristan Walker. I'm also here representing Stainer Architects as a pro bono capacity. We wanted to raise a concern that extensive demolition will negatively impact the health of the existing oak trees on the site. An assessment by certified arborist Matt Ribirich identified that two trees in proximity to the forest structures with a diameter of breast height of over sixty inches, these trees qualify as heritage oaks, and the largest is already stressed and needs immediate care. Heavy machinery from total demolition and new construction will compact the soil around the trees, reducing their access to water, oxygen, and nutrients, while debris will contaminate the soil. The widespread presence of invasive mustard seed on the site is competing with the oak trees for resources, making the trees vulnerable to disease, drought, and fire. A large pile of dead wood and mulch on site further increases fire risk and can reduce invasive beetles identified as a significant threat specifically to mature oaks. There's an immediate need for onsite intervention to protect these heritage oaks. We encourage council to approve Creek's request to introduce a motion to amend agenda item number two from potential demolition to selective demolition, and agenda item number five from demolish and rebuild to adaptively reuse. This is a project that aligns directly with Pasadena's climate action plan. It prioritizes reusing existing buildings, reducing wastes, and limiting new construction. This is a project that benefits our community and our environment, and I urge you to define the parameters for an RFP that prioritizes adaptive reuse, a construction model essential to our collective future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David, Dave Wieschoff, followed by Emily Hopkins, and then Heavenly Hughes.
Hello. Mayor Gordo, I'm Pasadena City Council. I'm Dave Wieschoff, vice president and conservation chair of Pasadena Audubon Society, and wish to emphasize the importance of expediting the issuance of the RFP as well as accelerating the RFP decision process and signing a contract to proceed. The Creek Coalition enthusiastically working for over three years on the project is ready now to reply to the RFP quickly, completely, and in response to the needs of the community. As you're aware, the annex area of the watershed park has been derelict for many years. It is a temporary rotating dumping ground for tons of miscellaneous dead trees, leaves, trunks, creating a fire hazard and a risk of personal injury and beetles. The vacant buildings are unattended and at risk of vandalism, as well as inviting personal injuries and other hazards to park users who might visit the location day or night just on an occasional basis. And we have seen that going through the, the area, individuals, and also small groups of children going through the, this property in its current state. The mission of Pasadena Audubon is to bring the... The mission of Pasadena Audubon is to bring the excitement of birds to our community through birding education, conservation of bird habitats. Pasadena Audubons actively supports these activities but is severely limited by the lack of suitable venues to do so, especially since Eaton Canyon is closed and will not be reopened for many years. We forecasted we could readily provide free public education, recreational, and conservation offerings at CREEK nine times a month, more than trebling our support to Pasadena area families, schools, and multicultural demographics. And not only will be three times the number of events, educational programs, et cetera, but we're currently limited to twenty-five people per meeting by what we have access...
Sir, your time is up.
And we could triple that.
Sir, your time is up. We want to be fair to everyone.
The time is quick now, quickly to issue the RFP.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Emily Hopkins, followed by Heavenly Hughes, followed by Marcus Renner, then Jessica Blickley, then Marcos Aguilar. Go ahead.
Hi, members of council and Mayor Gordo, thank you for having me today. I am a resident of District One. My name is Emily Hopkins, and current resident, I'm back, executive director of Side Street Projects and CREEK Coalition member. I am actually reading a public statement on behalf of our communications manager, Stephanie Aviles, who is also a District One resident because she is born and raised here, and I think that her experience speaks more to the urgency. My name is Stephanie Aviles. I am the proud District One resident, the daughter of Salvadoran immigrants, and a first-generation college graduate. I grew up in Pasadena. I attended Washington Elementary and Middle School and John Muir High School. I am here today not only as a community member but a proud team member of the visual arts organization Side Street Projects who deeply values the city. The Hahamanga Annex has great potential to become a vibrant community hub by uplifting local voices and engaging residents through art and more. For example, I can see our free intergenerational art skill shares workshops being a place of sanctuary for folks to connect with community-centered artists and learn new skills. I still remember school field trips with my grandma to the Eaton Canyon Nature Center learning about my backyard's wildlife. Now imagine something like that in northwest Pasadena, offering programs in intergenerational art and environmental education. This is the future I envision, and I hope you'll support it by releasing the RFP as soon as possible so that we can get to work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good timing, thank you.
Well, actually, you have...
Ms. Hughes.
Hello, hello, hello. It's so great to see all of your faces tonight. We're still up and at it, right? This topic is the most important topic to us right now. So I'm glad that it was not being moved to another night. We really want to, everything's been said, right? Everything's been said. It's very important why we want to have this environmental, climate, all the things, right? The climate, the environment, education, inclusive diversity, healing in nature, all the things that we need right now in our community. It's available, it's before, it's right here before, it's all we have to do is vote and say, let's get this RFP. We want to say yes to that, yes to the RFP, and we want to make some adjustments saying, let's get it within the next ninety days. Because what I understand is that the Hahamanga Annex has been sitting for over twenty years, right? So it's been dormant like death, kind of like a space that's been grieving, although it has all this life that can be activated right in that space, right? I'm actually experiencing that with all my neighbors in Altona right now. We're grieving, right? We want to activate this space. And when we see that places like Hahamanga Annex sitting for twenty years, it's a little discouraging because we don't want to see that happen in Altona. We don't want to see that happen in Pasadena where places are sitting twenty years dormant, waiting for decisions to be made. So I'm just glad that decisions are going to be made tonight to activate this space, to be able to say, let's get this RFP out there so people can apply for the RFP. When you do the RFP, it's giving access to many people to be a part of it, although I think the CREEK Coalition is very prepared. Yes, we are. Yes, we are. Yet, we are, we understand that this opportunity needs to be a process, and so let's get this process going. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes.
So then it's Marcus Renner, Jessica Blickley, then Marcos Aguilar, and then Anna Soul River.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to coast on Heavenly's energy that she just brought. I'm speaking to you as somebody who just finished a PhD dissertation from UC Davis in Geography on Environmental Justice in Pasadena and along the Arroyo, and I just want to underscore the real opportunity to address environmental justice, which is, as I understand it, a required mandate of the state to incorporate into our general plan. A lot of this opportunity has to do with the history. Twenty-five years before the first Environmental Justice Summit in Washington, D.C., Outward Bound Adventures was taking young people of color into the outdoors and introducing them to conservation careers. There's a place for the co-founders of OBA, Helen Mary Williams, Helen and Leroy Chris, and Bud Ross, to be embraced by the city and the pantheon of civil rights leaders in line with Jackie Robinson, in line with Octavia Butler, that this is an opportunity, because of this history, to honor it. Before getting a PhD, I did a, wrote a master's thesis on conservation education. There was a distinction made at the Finest Committee meeting between nature education as Eaton Canyon and workforce development. But the best environmental education connects nature education, our plants and wildlife, to how we treat each other, to how we build and power our cities, to how we manage our water, to environmental engineering, to the environmental careers young people dream of, and to the workforce skills that they need to make those dreams a reality. Not many environmental education groups take on that challenge, but that's what CREEK aspires to. So there's a real opportunity here. I know you're just approving the RFP, but thinking about building and honoring the OBA founders, and not only teaching about nature but joining that with workforce development for conservation careers and starting green businesses for Pasadena. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Jessica Blickley, followed by Marcos Aguilar, then Anna Soul River.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jessica Blickley, and I'm a professor at Pasadena City College, where I've been teaching biology for the last twelve years. I'm here to speak in strong support of CREEK and the RFP for the Hahamanga Watershed Park Annex. In our classes at PCC, we use the Hahamanga Watershed Park and the Arroyo as a living laboratory. It's a critical part of our curriculum, where students apply the academic knowledge and technical field skills that they are learning in class by collecting real data and engaging in authentic research. Beyond the academic, for many students that have grown up here, these trips are their first opportunity to connect with the nature in their own backyard. I have seen it time and again. These experiences in the Arroyo spark a genuine and lasting connection to the natural world and inspire careers in conservation, environmental science, and environmental education. CREEK will amplify this work. The proposed environmental education center will provide a permanent home for hands-on learning, both in the classrooms and in the field. Equally important, it will serve as a vital hub to connect students with community members and environmental organizations that are working here in our local community. Environmental education for the community and by the community. Crucially, it will also provide essential job training for environmental and conservation careers, preparing the next generation to face our most pressing climate challenge. CREEK represents more than an environmental education center. It's a community-driven investment in Pasadena's future. I urge you to move forward without delay by expediting the RFP process and avoiding unnecessary demolition. Our students and our community need this center now. Thank you for your time and your support in bringing this initiative to life.
Thank you. Marcos Aguilar, followed by Anna Soul River.
My name is Marcos Aguilar. My service and executive director of Anahuacalmeque. We're the only indigenous people's school in all of Los Angeles County. I'm also head of the CCAT Community Development Corporation, by which we liberated twelve acres of land in northeast LA that were rematriated to the Gaberlinos Shoshone Nation. And through those partnerships, we met and collaborated much more closely with Outward Bound Adventures and are here to support the initiative. Here to express my support for item eleven on the agenda today regarding the Hahamanga Watershed Park Annex area, I'd like to add my voice of support for the concept of the Climate Resilience Education Center as proposed by the Coalition, including Outward Bound Adventures and San Gabriel Ban and Mission Indians, among others. As a Nahuac Mexican Indigenous educator, I look forward to including the proposed concepts of the park annex as a future learning site for millions of Indigenous children, youth, and families from across North America, who make the greater Los Angeles area, including Pasadena, their home, our home, as we grow in our autonomous approaches to Indigenous education across the county. However, with regards to the SEQA exemption, we urge the council to conduct formal tribal consultation with all local tribes in compliance also with AB 52 as a proper and necessary course of action and a requirement respecting tribal self-determination and sovereignty. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And... Anna Soul River.
Welcome back.
I'm back. Good evening again. Tonight I want to emphasize one thing, alignment. We say we want sustainability, equity, and climate resilience, but our actions most align with those values, especially here in a place like Hahamanga. We pass an adaptive reuse ordinance. We can invest in climate education through projects like CREEK, and yet we're still proposing demolition of usable structures without full exploration of reuse. That's not alignment, that's contradiction. If we're serious about climate action, adaptive reuse isn't optional. It's essential. It's how we reduce carbon, preserve cultural memory, and model responsible land stewardship. Hahamanga is sacred ground ecologically and historically. Let's not erase what exists before we ask the right questions. And let's also be practical. The longer we delay an RFP and clear guidance, the more these buildings deteriorate, making reuse harder, slower, and more expensive. Time is money. Streamlining adaptive reuse as a first choice and offering incentives can actually save time and resources while staying true to ourselves. I urge you to amend the recommendation tonight and to prioritize adaptive reuse before moving forward, not as a symbolic gesture but as a real commitment to sustainability, to history, and to the future we keep talking about. Let's lead by example and put our policies into practice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
That completes public comment on this item.
Before we get to council members, can you maybe respond to RFP options to address reuse versus new?
Yes, Mayor Gordo, safety has been our priority as it relates to the recommendation of demolishing the buildings. Having heard from the community, there is an opportunity in the RFP process if council directs. We can incorporate a feasibility study to have a firm come in and do the study and recommend which buildings selectively can be demolished and which ones can be preserved for use, for adaptive reuse. That is an option we can incorporate in the RFP if that is council's recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
And that, just for clarification on that, that would be paid for by the applicant or the warty of the RFP, correct?
Yes, Councilmember Hampton, that is, the intent is, once we release the RFP, and we will do our utmost best expedited as fast as possible to release it within the timelines being requested, and within the RFP will highlight the fact that the operator and proposers would be responsible for the feasibility study, the adaptive reuse, the construction necessary rehabilitation, as well as the operation of the site.
You mentioned exped, I'm so sorry to everybody that's in the queue, but you mentioned expedite, and this is what I was talking about before when we were playing musical chairs. What does that mean?
The RFP process?
The RFP process.
To have it released?
You just said that you would expedite it.
Go ahead, and then we'll get back to the queue.
Yeah, Councilmember, our intent is to make sure we capture everything that should be within the RFP and consulting with the departments that should be consulted, as well as the LA County's RPUSD, given that the grant, we want to make sure they're comfortable because they had given a grant, it's in the report, the area was rehabilitated, and they should have a say. So part of that process is we're buying safe timeline to not commit for a shorter timeframe, yet allow us actual reasonable time to put the RFP together and release it. So we will do our best to release it as fast as possible, but there's still the evaluation and the interview process that comes afterwards. So that is our goal. The intent is to do the best we can to release this sooner than intended in the report.
Okay. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to emphasize something Coco said because, you know, we looked at this, went back three years, and there's been a long process here. We wanted to dot the i and cross the t's, and I thank the public for, the community, for giving us that time to get it right. And I think now we bring forward a report that really has us ready to move forward. However, you know, it is important to remember the buildings have sat vacant for, since 2004, that's in the report. So twenty-one years, there's been a lot of damage to them, there's been theft, there's been a lot of infrastructure that's, you know, vandalized. And I myself went to go see it, I wasn't allowed to go in because of the dangers associated with it. So I think we need to be careful on the safety component, and I think what Mr. Penocian is telling me and telling us is that we can work into the RFP process a way to safely do a feasibility study to see what can and can't be saved or reused, what needs to be demolished, and we can enter into that exercising good faith. But I also do want everyone to be mindful of, our own safety office went out and identified all kinds of safety issues, asbestos, lead, all of the hazardous materials that are from a different era that we still have to contend with. But we can, again, work that into an RFP, and as you suggested, Councilmember Hampton, that would be on the proponents, whoever it is, because we're going through an RFP in good faith. We don't know who's going to submit proposals, but we can engage in that process so that we can vet it carefully and safely.
Mr. Masuda, followed by Mr. Cole, then Mr. Jones, then Mr. Madison.
You know, thank you very much for letting us know what this is all about. In fact, I asked them the question from, just on the side here, about the feasibility study and trying to preserve the buildings if possible, and now we're hearing from the city manager saying how it's kind of a real dangerous situation right now because of safety concerns. Is there a possibility of start going into that direction of trying to save the buildings, at least some of them?
Councilmember Madison, I'm sorry, Councilmember Masuda, yes, there's opportunity is there, and it would have to be determined by a consultant we bring aboard or the proposal bring aboard to do that study. It is, there is room, the safety officer has identified methods of entry to the building, access to the building, to, you know, play it safe, wear a 95 mask, so we'll have to put criteria as to who can get access to the building and what type of work should be done that could all be incorporated in the RFP.
I certainly liked the idea when the speakers were talking about educational purposes, and that's really great, but the adapted reuse is what caught my attention, so thank you for your studying that.
Thank you. Mr. Cole, followed by Mr. Jones, and Mr. Madison.
I appreciate Mr. Masuda and Mr. Hampton's comments about expediting the RFP and about doing everything we can to look at adaptive reuse. I'm going to be unusually direct, Mayor, because I find this to be a surreal situation. I understand why we are not just partnering automatically with CREEK. This is public property, and we have an obligation to have an open process. But we've been at this for a couple of years, and literally no one in the universe has stepped forward and said, I would be vaguely interested in this project, except CREEK. We have a broad, multiracial, community coalition of credible, committed, passionate people who have been on this like flies on flypaper for years.
Mr. Cole, may I interrupt? Because the RFP process may need to be voted on. I'm not, I'm going to look to the city attorney. The awarding of a contract, yeah. Yeah, the actual contract. If there are multiple...
Proposal submitted?
Yeah. I don't want any one of us to get too far ahead and be accused of having made up our mind before a contract with the comments we make tonight, and so...
Yeah, you're just framing...
Okay.
Right now, generally, not...
I appreciate your comments, Mayor, but...
And I would like to clarify that I'm the council member that represents the area, and there's been a lot of interest of those buildings.
Yeah. For someone to propose?
For the use of those buildings.
Okay.
Since I've been elected.
Okay. So you expect that there will be applicants beside CREEK?
I think that they're doing a great job at making sure that there are no other applicants. I think that they're doing a great job at making sure that there are no other applicants.
So let me, in consideration of your...
Public institutions as well who...
In consideration of your comments, Mayor, let me make this point. Pasadena Playhouse exists today, they just bought their building, because we partnered with them first with the developer and then with the nonprofit, and we saved the State Theater of California, which now stands on its own, self-sufficient. The Western Justice Center, notwithstanding the arguments over whether they have weddings, exists because we partnered with them with a lease for a building that has had really significant contributions to our community. We have a Norton Simon Museum where we still pay to do the landscaping there. We've partnered with One Arroyo, who have raised money and done projects. We have an extraordinarily longstanding partnership with an organization called the Tournament of Roses, where we are intimately connected to them financially and logistically. And the Pasadena Armory exists because this city partnered with them. Okay, we'll go through an RFP process, but I think the way to expedite this is not to exhaustively create all of the 17,000 possibilities, legal, logistical, financial, et cetera, but rather to see who is actually viable. It's more like a request for interest, and then to enter into not just negotiations about how we can protect ourselves seven ways from Sunday, but how we can actually bring into birth, as we did the parade and the bowl, the Norton Simon Museum, the Pasadena Playhouse, the Western Justice Center, the Armory Center for the Arts. These were products of the city partnering with community organizations. And I would like to see if we have a community organization who wins this RFP, that we not try to solve every problem beforehand, but rather we find a viable partner, and then we try to solve the problems with them so that we end up with a great project. And I think if that's our approach, there is no question that we can get this out on the street in 90 days, and if we have multiple applicants, great, we'll go through the process, weigh the pluses and minuses. But if, as I suspect, we only have a very small number of viable applicants, then we can get to moving forward to bringing this dream into realization. That's my approach to this.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. I don't think anybody disagrees, I don't think anybody disagrees with the partnership and the importance of working with partners. The examples you use, however, none of them were subject to an RFP. None of them were subject to the legal implications and ramifications if we don't follow the RFP process and law. This one is subject of an RFP, and it's, we're bound by our own rules in handling an RFP as well as state and...
What's the state law on RFPs? I understand the state surplus...
We have to be fair, and we can't, it has to be competitive. You can't just say we're gonna issue an RFP and...
Where in the state administrative code does it say that? There's no rules for requests for proposals for cities.
For a competitive RFP.
No, there is not, Mayor, there is forbidding, yes, absolutely. There is absolutely for surplus property, but we're making a choice about our property, and there's no state rules on that.
But we've made a decision to have a competitive and open process, that's the rule.
And we have our charter and our code that we would follow with respect to that, the city, not as...
It's there.
I understand that, but it's not factual to say there's state law on this that applies here. We have our own rules and our own laws. We issue RFIs, we issue RFPs, and this should, in my view, look more like an RFI. That's competitive, and it should be competitive, but the reality is, is that we don't have to have an exhaustive process if we end up with one or two applicants.
That's not what I'm suggesting, and if we didn't follow our own rules on a competitive RFP, you better believe the Attorney General would be down here from the state Attorney General to call us on that, and that's what I mean by following state rules. So we should follow our own rules, that's all I'm suggesting. Find a partner, follow our rules, find a partner, and work with them as you suggest in partnership. But if we don't, the state implication comes from the Attorney General if we don't do that, or somebody else. So, Mr. Jones.
Thanks, Mayor, and I only need like five minutes. Coco, you said that we could do a feasibility study to look at rehabbing the buildings instead of demoing them, right? So you can incorporate that into your RFP?
Correct. Councilmember Jones, what I said was incorporate a feasibility requirement, feasibility study requirement in the RFP, so the successful proposers would have to conduct that, hiring the right consultants, and determination of that study can help guide us which buildings should or should not be demolished, or selectively choosing which buildings must be demolished based on the findings.
Okay, because I'm interested in repurposing the buildings and adaptive reuse of those buildings. And then the second part was the RFP doesn't necessarily have to take one year, right? You can expedite the process, and like, how soon could you get it out?
Councilmember Jones, I don't want to put a timeline, it's a matter of resources, and sometimes things do get delayed and held up, and I just don't want to put a timeline. We feel six months would have been appropriate, it gives us enough time of whatever delays we might experience at the different levels, different organizations that we have to work with, but the goal now, based on the direction, is to expedite it, to get it to be released sooner than the six month.
Sooner than the six months, okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Madison, followed by Mr. Hampton.
Thank you, Mayor. One question I had was, how many acres of the 30 total are we talking about here?
Councilmember, this area is roughly about eight to 10 acres.
Okay.
And then the Oakland comes in the mix as well. The 30 acres is the entire Hahamanga area that has all the equestrian centers, but this location is roughly about 10 acres.
So is that the right way to think of it, that we're dealing with an RFP for the use of the 10 acres, or is it just the buildings or something else?
So Councilmember Madison, there were two areas within the Hahamanga Annex that we're considering. One is the former U.S. Forest Service, which are the buildings, these six buildings, and the surrounding area, and then the second area is the Oaklands, the woody area, which is the open space. That is the second portion that we're incorporating A and B together for this particular RFP process.
Okay, so how many acre, because you said in the surrounding area on the buildings, so how many?
Buildings and surrounding areas, plus the Oaks, the Woodlands is roughly about 10 acres.
Total?
Total.
And do you have a division of the breakdown of that?
There is a map that actually would show, yes, if I could pull the, it's, I believe it's one of the attachments, and I do have it as a slide, if we can pull the presentation, please, I'd be happy to show that. In the agenda report, it is Attachment C that shows.
Thank you. And then, is this one RFP for both parcels?
Yes, sir. The intent is to identify both areas within the RFP and one operator to commit to both.
Okay, and then, I do think the debate between two of my colleagues was interesting, but it was a little bit premature. I do think, though, that the Surplus Land Act does apply, right? The California Surplus Land Act, under the acquisition agreement with MWD?
That is correct. So Councilmember Mason, we did reach out to the housing...
No, no, my question was just, the Surplus Land Act applies?
It does apply, and we are exempt as an agency for its agency use.
We are exempt?
We are exempt to, from the reporting under the Surplus Lands Act, only because we are considered as agency use because the intent to use it to bring a nonprofit organization to operate as we would, it kind of allows for the exemption.
Okay, so we're still bound by the Land Act, we just don't have to report to someone or agency.
That is correct.
Okay, and then, the costs that we have, I noticed there was a lot of enthusiasm and even some kind of maybe overly robust comments about grant funding that's been promised or is out there somewhere, and that's great, I hope that's all real, but for right now, the question is, are those estimates of cost current? Because there's a lot of old information kind of embedded in this record, but the...
So Councilmember Madison, the cost estimates presented herein were evaluated and resubmitted with partnership with our Public Works Department. It was when we brought this item to the Finance Committee in May of this year, I believe it was May, that's when these numbers were revamped to more current standards of what the estimates would be. And of course, we also in the report highlight that these are estimates as of today, there'll be like 7% escalation for construction for future years.
And we'll look to the RFP applicants to address the financing?
Yes, sir.
In whole?
Yes, that is the intent.
Okay, and is it a long-term lease or a land transaction or some other form, or is that not baked in right now?
We will be consulting with the city attorney's office as to the best approach. There are a number of ways we can approach it, whether it be a lease or an operating agreement for the use of the area for a long period of time. And the intent to do a long-term contract agreement is, because the entity is going to bring forth investment to the property by way of grants or other means, we want to make sure that they're able to get those grants, so longer term works best in that effort.
Okay, and then, this may be a little premature too, but since we've gotten so much comment from this one coalition, which is highly impressive, no question, but does it include the Tongva and Hahamanga native peoples?
I'm looking at the organization, and they're giving me the thumbs up that yes, it does.
Okay, can you explain that to me? So it includes the Tongva?
Correct.
So it's the Gabrielino?
San Gabriel.
San Gabriel Mission?
San Gabriel Mission.
Band of Indians, including Tongva and Hahamanga? Okay, great.
And their role in this is particularly around, I mean, they have a very robust role in the coalition, but in particular, they're gonna be managing the...
Well, let's not, we don't know that. You're gonna apply for a...
Sure.
That's the problem, that's the problem I was trying to highlight. But sir, if you could identify yourself for the record?
Myself?
Yes, just for the record.
We know you did before, but if you could do it again.
Brandon Hammerly, Creek, project manager.
Thank you, we just need to have a clear record.
Okay, those are my questions, Mayor, thank you.
That's precisely the problem that I was inartfully trying to highlight, but, okay. So, Mr. Hampton? Yeah, thank you, and I thank all my colleagues, and the discussion has been great. To Councilmember Cole's point about the RFP, I agree that I think the city could just go into a partnership with any organization. I agree with that, but in principle, I would not vote in favor of that, and I would never do that because that's the reason why there has been so many people that look like me that have been overlooked, because the city has decided to make sure that they are giving it to whoever their friends are or whatnot. And that's not just in the city of Pasadena, that's across the board, so I just want to be very clear here, that's the purpose of a RFP, is to make sure that it's fair for everyone to be able to participate in it. I appreciate the...
A real competitive process.
A real competitive process, absolutely. That is notified for everybody, and I appreciate the questions about the Tongva and the Gabrielino tribe being a part of the process in general. I wish we had had that as a part of the process, as I mentioned, when the One Arroyo was being formed. There's still not a board member, the One Arroyo, that, and every time they come and present to us, I say, "Where's the representation from those tribes?" Because the One Arroyo is essentially just recreating the same trails that were already created by the Native Americans that were here before. But, once again, I don't know if you guys were here earlier, that's, I appreciate it, but ADHD. So my motion would be to put out the RFP and make the feasibility study on the onus of the awardee of the RFP. Number two, as a part of the motion would be to have the RFP, we've already had a RFP that was presented for this before, isn't that correct?
Councilmember, not for this purpose.
But there was a RFP for these buildings at one point, or this space?
Councilmember, not to my knowledge, not for the use of the annex. You may be referring to the RFP process we started for the Equestrian Center, to bring new operators at the Equestrian Center.
Yeah.
That process is still pending, but we have not had one released for the annex, the use of these buildings, and this open space.
Okay, so this process, we've been talking about this, I feel like I've been talking about this for three years, and I would like to see, now that we have gotten all the i's dotted, the t's crossed, and we've asked all the right people, I would like to see this RFP go out in 90 days or before the end of the year. That would be my request and my motion, so my motion would be to make the feasibility study the onus of the RFP awardee, and for the RFP to go out within 90 days or by the end of the year, calendar, the end of the actual calendar year, not the fiscal year.
I'd second that.
Is that doable?
Mayor Gordo, we will do our utmost best to make that doable. I do have a clarification question. The assumption would be that the other items, which would be three and four, as in the organization, the entities allowed to submit and the uses, are also part of the motion being adopted?
Yes.
So all of the staff, the recommendations, one through five, because it includes SEQA and some other people.
Questions, comments? Okay.
And who was the second?
I don't know. So, Mr. Lyon?
Lyon, thank you.
Speaking of dotting i's and crossing t's, we have a motion and a second, and I think this is deserving of a roll call vote. You've all worked very hard to get us to this point. Don't interpret any of our comments as predetermining one way or the other. I think you all understand the open and competitive process and why it's important for us to follow the rules and have it be a real, open, and competitive process. I do suspect that the work that's been done is going to pay dividends, but I'm not prepared to predetermine that, nor would it be appropriate for any of us to do that. So with that, let's take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Hampton?
This is item 11, yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Lyon?
Yes.
Councilmember Madison?
Yes.
Councilmember Masuda?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rivas?
Yes.
Mayor Gordo?
Yes.
Motion is unanimously agreed.
Okay, again, thank you to the public and all of the staff and everyone who's gotten us to this point. Seems like it's slow, but we have to get it right. Okay, with that...
We have items 12 and 13 left, Mayor, it's a public hearing. This is the time and place for the public hearing on ordinance prohibiting Senate Bill nine applications within a very high fire hazard severity zone in the boundary of the Eden Fire. On August 28, 2025, the public hearing notice was published in the Pasadena Press. The city clerk's office received three letters in opposition to the staff recommendation and advocating for the city to maintain the implementation of SB 9. The letters have been distributed to the council, posted online, are part of the record for this public hearing item.
Do we have public comment?
We have two speakers on, and we're taking up items 12 and 13 concurrently.
Okay, why don't we open the public hearing?
Public hearing is open.
And I think the matter's pretty straightforward, why don't we, unless anyone needs a full presentation, why don't we just go straight to public comment?
Bert Newton, followed by Andrew Slockum, Slakeum, sorry, Slocum?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and City Council. So my concern with this is that SB 9 would be a good tool for people who are underinsured and who have lost their homes in the fire to be able to rebuild. They can sell half of their lot to someone who's gonna live in it, because SB 9 requires owner occupancy. So it's probably not gonna be used by anybody else, it'll probably be, because those who can rebuild on their whole lot will probably do so. It's only people who really need to, who are underinsured, that could use SB 9 to rebuild. And if they can't do that, they may sell to an outside investor, they'll sell the whole lot. SB 9 would not allow that, it would only allow it to be sold to somebody who's gonna live in it. It would only allow it to be sold to somebody who's going to live in it. So if we want to have our people stay and be able to move back and rebuild, we need to let SB 9 stand and allow them to use that. I don't think it'll be that many people, but it will be the people who really need it. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Slocum?
Yeah. Since we're doing two items concurrently, can I speak twice on each one? Yeah, okay. Good evening, councilmembers and Mayor...
Well, no. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
On the two items, yeah.
You can speak on both items, you'll have two minutes to speak.
Right.
For each item? No. Two minutes. Okay, all right. Anyway, I want to make it clear that banning SB 9 does not actually reduce the number of units that can be built. Under state law, ADUs, the same number of units is still allowed, even in areas with limited entry. What the ban really does is punish homeowners. ADUs are valued far lower than SB 9 because they are illegally accessory, not primary. The lower valuation means homeowners will have less equity, less access to financing, and insurance is now valued on the equity that you now have. In addition to this, underinsured families may use a lot split to sell their lot, as Bert had said, and that may be the only reason they're able to rebuild and stay here. On top of that, the number of SB 9 applications will be extremely small. There's not going to be a floodgate. So I think taking the knee-jerk reaction that Mayor's failed policies of City of Los Angeles, which will be facing a lawsuit over this, as it is a legislative authority in violation of constitutional separation of powers under the California Emergency Services Act, is not a way that Pasadena should go, I think we're better than City of LA. And so I urge you to not move forward with this ban that strips residents of value, equity, and choice without actually solving a housing or safety problem.
Thank you.
That completes public comment on this item.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Question?
Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Rivas?
Actually, Mayor, if Councilmember Cole has a question?
Go ahead, Mr. Cole.
Go ahead.
How many lots? I don't know if that, did I miss that in the staff report?
There are 185, approximately 185 parcels that would be subject to the ban.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I'll be brief, given the late hour. I totally understand the policy reason for suspending SB 9 in a high-density area with limited points of entry and exit, like we saw in the Palisades on that afternoon of January 7th, where it was just a traffic jam and they were bulldozing cars out of the way. That's, I think, the nightmare scenario that City of LA was trying to avert or try not to make worse. So I totally understand in that scenario why we'd want to suspend SB 9, try not to bring in more density to that neighborhood that dealt with a catastrophe. This neighborhood did as well, in Upper Hastings, homes burned, but we didn't have that evacuation blockage, essentially. There are, I believe, based on the map provided, and I think it's Exhibit B, four entry points, north-south streets going to those 185 homes. And so to my knowledge, and I defer, of course, to staff, and Councilman Masuda, it's your district, you know it well, in this area that we're talking about, was there, were there traffic trans, or did people have trouble getting out because the roads are blocked? I feel like that's the main concern that we're trying to address through this proposed action.
I can speak to that. I did speak to the fire chief, and they confirmed that there were not evacuation issues or cars coming in and out. I think from the staff perspective, it's an area where we wouldn't want more density. You know, we would like to focus our density in other areas. Under ADU law, you can get up to four units, but most of these lots already had attached garages, so you'd probably be looking at a maximum of three. You wouldn't be looking at these sites getting four ADUs because they're not converting a detached garage. So there would be potential for another unit on each one of these lots that they wouldn't get under ADU law. So I think just from the policy perspective of planning, it's not an area where we would like to see four times in the extreme scenario. We know that not every property would do it.
Right.
Potentially four times over the amount of rebuilding going on on the properties. So from that perspective, it's not traditional grid streets. You have some that are one way in, one way out. You don't have as many access points, and so they have to funnel into the streets to get out. And so just from a planning perspective, that was our approach, but again, it's up to the will of the council.
I appreciate that explanation. And can you remind me how many SB 9 projects we've had in the city in the last few years?
We've had four pool permits citywide, and we've had one as a result of the fire that is outside of this area, there in Council District 1. So this only impacts one portion of Councilmember Masuda's district.
Right, it's a very small...
Yeah.
Totally understand. So yeah, the fact that we, over the last several years, haven't seen many SB 9 projects, and in this tiny little sliver of a neighborhood, we're unlikely to see many, I'm uncomfortable with taking an option away from perhaps that one homeowner that does want to do a lot split, or maybe does want to make use of the ADU provision. So you've explained, and we've heard, that there are other ways to build ADUs, not necessarily through AB 9, so, through SB 9, sorry. So, again, just to wrap up, I don't feel like the case has been made for this neighborhood here, and I would hate to take away that option from that one neighbor who's, that one resident who's trying to rebuild and maybe does want to have that flexibility to do that here. But again, I appreciate the staff bringing this up, and I look forward to hearing everyone else's comments. Thank you.
Mr. Cole?
I share the concern of the Vice Mayor. Look, a couple of these streets, maybe we should never have built on, right? I mean, that's arguably, particularly the ones that are dead ends. But state law will allow additional density through ADUs, and very few people probably will take advantage of these. These are big homes on big lots. And if anything, I think people will build bigger houses rather than do lot splits. I, we haven't heard from the councilmember who represents the area. I don't see the urgent need for the handful of cases that might eventuate from this, and particularly given that the difference between what you can build in the way of ADUs and what you can build under SB 9 is de minimis, but there's a significant advantage to the homeowner if they take the SB 9 route. So, if we were to compromise, and I don't know if there's any interest in that, at least just confine it to the dead-end streets, right? There are streets like Valley Lights, you know, have plenty of access up and down. So that would be, I would be more comfortable with that than just saying, you know, SB 9 doesn't apply here. I think the number of people affected one way or the other is going to be probably counted on one hand. And there's, you know, we have to weigh the concerns about fire danger and density against the desire to allow people to rebuild in the neighborhood that they've lived in, in many cases for a number of years.
Yeah, I, let me say, as someone who represents that part of the city as well, and is very familiar with it, there are concerns about getting out in an emergency. And, you know, those were expressed. Our fire department did, and, you know, city staff in general did a phenomenal job of getting people out, but that could have been a very different situation. And these 139 property owners who were impacted, you know, we want to do everything we can to support them, and we have. I think it's very telling, and this is partly a statement and partly a question, that I don't know where you live, Mr. Slocum, but residents who were impacted or not here objecting to this, have they expressed a view one way or another? Have the residents said, no, don't do this?
My microphone might have, not to staff.
Yeah. I, and this is a group of residents who, believe me, has been very, very engaged in everything that we've done to be responsive. What we're trying to, I think the intent of setting aside SB 9 is to not create the situation that, you know, you're describing, Ms. Rivas. And, you know, there are infrastructure issues in terms of fire hydrants. There are access issues, and there's the question of whether or not we should be constructing in areas like this, whether we, as Mr. Cole said, whether we should have, and now the question is whether we should increase the density there. Some of these lots are right up, they're in canyons, they're right up against the foothills. And, you know, I think we have to be careful about creating another situation like that. And so, I, you know, I plan to support the motion. And if, I'm sorry, there's no motion. I plan to support the staff recommendation for all of those reasons. Unless we're prepared to say we're going to increase the capacity of our infrastructure to meet the needs of the additional density, and we're okay with increasing density in this neighborhood, given what we've experienced in Altadena, this neighborhood, and other, and in Los Angeles, I think that would be a mistake for us to do. Mr. Masuda, did you have?
Thank you. Vice Mayor, we didn't have the congestion you're talking about like in Palisades and Malibu area, because, you know, I'm familiar with that as well. If you remember, we were going through a red-flagged alert right before that, and so we're, of course, you know, being in the, you know, the hills over there in the Upper Hastings, very concerned. But I don't know what your question is, because we don't, in fact, of course, the people that lived there that were supposed to leave, because it was evacuation requirement, they didn't. Lot of them didn't leave, so that's, that probably added to the lack of congestion. So what is your question about that?
Sure, so my question, and I think Jennifer answered it, was essentially, I see the logic of suspending SB 9 or avoiding density?
Yes.
Where there's a potential for traffic trans, where there's only one point of ingress. You know, people can only get out through one street, only get in through one street, and we have the situation we had in the Palisades, which was horrific and terrifying for those folks. Again, I just don't see that this neighborhood is that situation. So I think what the City of LA did in the Palisades makes 100% sense here, because there's, we're only talking about 100 homes as opposed to hundreds feeding into one street. We have about 180, I think it is, feeding into four streets, and some of them are cul-de-sacs for sure. I just don't, I see it as two different scenarios. And we went through the worst, we went through the worst that could have happened, and we didn't have the traffic jams. And I think Councilmember Cole's point is very important, and just that, at the end of the day, no matter which way we go, it's going to affect a handful of people. We're not really going to, and so that's, for me, that pushes me towards leaving things as they are for that one or two homeowners who, do you want to make use of SB 9? I really don't think we're going to see a rush to do something. So in the grand scheme of things, I don't, you know, I don't think we're going to shift things too much in either direction, no matter what action we take, but for me personally, I think the case hasn't been made, like it was in the Palisades, to suspend SB 9. And I want to make sure that all homeowners, you know, whoever is out there, might be just one or two of them that want to use it, if that, it's probably none, honestly, just looking at the numbers of SB 9 projects in the last three years across the city. So, but I want to make sure they have all the options on the table as homeowners going through a very difficult situation and through their rebuilding process, so.
You know, the only thing I would say to that is, wasn't, we're not just talking about the properties that were impacted, we're talking about the rest of the neighborhood as well.
Oh, absolutely, and they all feed down into those streets.
And we didn't see what happened in Los Angeles, you know, for two reasons, well, the whole host of reasons. But one is the wind shifted. You know, the wind was headed in an easterly direction and then shifted in a westerly direction. One. Two, we issued our evacuation orders before Los Angeles, or the county did, and our staff evacuated as many people as would leave. And so our process was different. We handled it proudly.
Absolutely.
You know, different, but we also, you know, had some, and again, my thoughts to the people who, and prayers to the people who were impacted, but if that wind hadn't shifted, you know, but for the grace of God, if that wind hadn't shifted, we might be looking at a totally different situation, including people not being able to get out in time. And that's what we're guarding against, that what I'm suggesting we guard against. Mr. Cole?
Just a final comment, and then I think we should take a vote here. I think we all are concerned about protecting the neighborhoods, and I think we all are concerned about giving people the maximum option to rebuild where appropriate. Again, for me, we don't control the number of cars that people have in their house, we don't control the number of people that live in a house, we don't have any control over the number of ADUs that are allowed by state law. So we're talking probably of these 185 homes, we're talking about the margin of error one way or the other, the margin of error of people moving in, and six people moving into a house instead of three people or a single person. So to me, I would be much more comfortable with just the dead-end streets. I think there's a real concern on the dead-end streets. But I respect other people's views. So because the staff recommendation is, I think we've heard at least two voices in favor of it, I will move that we limit it to just the dead-end streets, and if that doesn't pass, then I will support the staff recommendation.
And what's your recommendation on infrastructure improvements if we increase the density up there?
I think it's in the margin of error of the number of people that live there and the number of people that can build ADUs. I think, I think the, there's 185 lots, not everybody is going to be adding any units, but anybody can add up to three units, this would add up to four units. The difference between the people who can add three and the people who can add four is about the same as the number of older couples that sell their home, and now a family moves in with two teenagers. I mean, it's a very small number. So I don't think there's going to be a need for any more fire hydrants or any less fire hydrants in the end. But again, let's try this out and see if there's any support for that besides me and the Vice Mayor, and if not, then we move with the staff recommendation. So that's my motion if the Vice Mayor will second it.
Sure, I'll second it.
Well, just point of order, can I ask Councilmember Masuda what your position is on this? Are you supporting the staff recommendation?
I am.
Okay. I'm going to support the councilmember from the district.
And the mayor?
And the mayor for the whole city.
I had a quick follow-up question. So have residents in Hastings Ranch reached out to you asking for this, voicing their opinion one way or the other?
No.
They haven't?
No, no, but I definitely know where they are.
Yeah.
Yeah, just from talking to them in general.
Yeah, I'm prepared to support the representatives of the area, so I would support the staff motion or recommendation. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Well, we have a motion and second, any other comments? Okay.
So this is to limit the...
Oh.
And if we hear, and if we hear different from the residents, we should be prepared to shift gears, so to speak.
Well, the motion is not what the councilmember from the district and the mayor...
Correct.
Right, so...
Correct.
Should there be a substitute?
Meaning, if, I'm not going to support the motion as it is. And if we get, you know, feedback from the neighbors saying, you know, we just, you blew it, and, you know, believe me, Mr. Masuda will hear about it, the staff will hear about it, I will... hear about it, I will hear about it, and we should, you know, inform them immediately that this motion has passed.
Or I...
I mean, sorry, that this motion has passed, or that the staff recommendation, if this motion doesn't pass, hopefully that will pass, and we should inform them either way.
I appreciate that, Mayor. Just reading the room, I think the staff recommendation will ultimately pass, and I just appreciate you being open to listen to the residents, because if there is that one homeowner that comes in and is like, "Man, I really want to do a lot split, but you guys are not letting me," at least we can, you know, reconsider at that point. So I appreciate that.
Well, I'm not sure if the staff recommendation passes, reading the room, and so I thought this was a smart compromise position, to actually address the streets where we have an egress issue, so.
We'll see where we...
And just procedurally to remind everyone, this is an interim ordinance, so we will return within 45 days to extend it longer if something, if there's something to pass. We would, so it would be, this is for 45 days, we are having a workshop on the 18th, it's the 18th, with, our fourth workshop with the residents, so we can socialize some of this as well. So when we come back, after the 45 days, we will have some feedback, and we can provide more information at that time as well.
And believe me, I know that neighborhood well, having attended Pasadena High School, and spent a lot of time in that neighborhood with friends, and there are, but for that wind shifting, there would have been ingress and egress issues. But for the wind shifting and our staff, you know, acting swiftly, there would have been problems beyond what we saw. So...
So if the staff recommendation passes, you'll socialize it for 45 days, you said, and then if you hear from residents that, "No, we wanted to do lot splits," you would come back to the council?
We have to reach, this is an interim emergency ordinance, so we have to return within 45 days, and we would ask the council to extend it for up to two years, unless the emergency order is lifted, then everything goes away anyways. And we're having a workshop on the 18th, so we were going to let people know what happened tonight as part of the other updates that we're giving, so they'll be aware of what happened, and we'll explain that we're going to be coming back in 45 days, and so if they have strong opinions one way or another, that they could participate if we come back with something.
Congratulations, Jennifer, you just coined a new term, "socialize," our policy decisions. Okay.
Procedurally, Mayor, we need to close the public hearing first before we...
Okay, motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any objections? Seeing on public hearing is closed. Now, on the merits, we have a motion is...
To limit to the dead-end streets?
So roll call?
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Hampton is absent. Councilmember Jones?
No.
Councilmember Lyon?
Yes.
Councilmember Madison?
No.
Councilmember Masuda?
No.
Vice Mayor Rivas?
Yes.
Mayor Gordo?
No.
That's three in favor, four against, the motion does not pass.
I will move the staff recommendation.
I'll second, if Mr. Masuda wants to move it.
Mr.?
I thought I did make the motion already.
Mr. Cole will...
I'm happy to, Mr. Masuda, I was in the spirit of trying...
Yeah, yeah.
You all heard, we had a vote.
Yep.
It was not successful, so we move on, that's all.
Mr. Masuda will, yeah, and you'll second.
I'll make the motion to support...
You represent the area, you should second.
Oh, okay, thank you, I'll second. Thank you, Mr. Jones, I appreciate it.
Per the staff recommendation moved by Mr. Masuda, seconded by Mayor Gordo.
Roll call?
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Hampton is absent. Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Lyon?
Yes.
Councilmember Madison?
Yes.
Councilmember Masuda?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rivas?
No.
Mayor Gordo?
Yes.
Motion passes, six in favor, one against. And then we have to do the ordinance. Mr. Masuda, you want to offer the ordinance?
Yes, I would.
Okay, so... There's the ordinance, there we go. This is an interim urgency ordinance of the City of Pasadena prohibiting urban lot splits and construction of multi, sorry, construction of multiple dwellings pursuant to Senate Bill 9 in very high fire hazard severity zones within the boundary of the Eden Fire. To conduct first reading, Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Hampton's absent. Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Lyon?
Yes.
Councilmember Madison?
Yes.
Councilmember Masuda?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rivas?
No.
Mayor Gordo?
Yes.
Ordinance was successfully first read with six in favor, one against, one absent.
Okay, on the socialization. Now, that completes?
That does complete. Item 14 was not discussed, and I don't see anybody left over to give public comment on that.
Okay. Now, I would ask that we stand...
Mayor, before we do that, just in the manner of agenda items and the like, I have asked a couple of times that we agendize the Guanajuato Sister City relationship. There's an invitation outstanding to the entire council and the mayor to attend events next month now, the time is passing, and I'd like to know if we're going to do that. If not, then I'd request that we formally agendize a motion to put it on the agenda. I would hope that's not necessary. I think there's an, you know, interest on all of our part to move forward with a Sister City relationship in Mexico, especially given the events that we're living under now. So just would love to know your view on that.
Well, my view is, you know, the Sister City, the Sister City program is an international program that focuses on building relations and working together. The fact that, you know, the approach fails to even take account, you know, or go through our own Sister City committee flies in the face of that spirit. I've not heard our Sister City Committee make a recommendation to us, and I'd be interested in modeling what the Sister City program is all about right here in our city. And so, I, you know, I'm happy to agendize that issue and that question, whether we should model in our own process what the Sister City program attempts to achieve. So...
Yeah, I'm fine with that, as long as it includes the opportunity for us to, you know, pursue that relationship with Guanajuato. I mean, there is a report, I don't think it's unanimous on the Sister City, but they arranged a visit here, they've visited there, I think there's pretty overwhelming support for it. Somehow it seems to have been politicized there, and I'm not interested in that. I want to move forward, and frankly, it's embarrassing now that we've hosted the mayor, and she's hosted a contingent, and now she's asked the council and the mayor to attend the Day of the Dead celebration with her. There's no other alternative on the table, near as I can tell.
That's inaccurate, but I would ask that the Sister...
There's no publicly available information about any other alternative.
No politicized recommendation that made it appear that there's no one else ready to participate. And so, you know, I would ask that the Sister City Committee weigh in and tell us whether there are others under consideration, whether that's their recommendation, and then we can make a decision. So that's what I would recommend. So we can have that discussion.
But will you include the option? Because again, I would just, I just want to make sure that's included, so the council has the power to do that. I don't want to get caught in a catch-22 if the agenda doesn't include that.
Yeah, I'll ask the Sister City Committee their view, because they're the ones, you know, the last time there was public comment here on that issue, I suggested that we go through the Sister City Committee, and one of the speakers said, "Well, we can just, you know, essentially do it ourselves." And that, I think it was Mr. Gonzalez, you know, and that just, in my view, that approach flies in the face of what we're trying to do. And so, you know, we'll, I'll ask the Sisters Committee to weigh in whether we should take their recommendation, so that that feedback is before the council when we take the issue up.
Yeah, so I'm going to ask them that we formally agendize next Monday a motion to pursue Guanajuato, so that we'll have that option as well, and the council will have to vote on that under our rules of procedure to have it agendized. That's unfortunate, because again, maybe there are backroom conversations, but there's been no public...
That's the concern.
No, let me just finish, there have been no public information about any other relationship. There have been no visits by any other city. There have been no, nothing certainly publicly available, and it should be a public process.
That's inaccurate. One, there have been visits, and there have been people who expressed an interest, and I've always referred to them through the appropriate process to go to Sister Cities. That's what's different about this.
But I don't think Sister City has done anything nearly as substantial as what they have with Guanajuato. I don't, I'm not aware of any official exchanges, visits.
But, yeah, we're probably getting too far down the line.
Are you making a motion to have this agendized?
Can I do that tonight?
You can make it, you can make a motion to have a future agenda item, yes.
Okay, I thought I had to...
Yeah, I think we have to list it as...
I thought we had to agendize that motion.
Yeah.
And so you're making a motion to have this considered for the agenda at the next meeting?
Please.
My understanding is the process...
You want them to vote next week on whether to put it on the agenda?
To agendize, to agendize a vote on whether to put it on the agenda.
Right, right, that's what I'm trying to say, which I think you just did, but...
Yes.
Okay.
That's the request.
That's the request.
And I don't think it's a motion, I think it's, I make that request, and it goes on the agenda next Monday to vote on.
So next week, there will be an agenda item that says consideration of a request by Councilmember Madison to agendize the Sister City relationship with Guanajuato, Mexico, and that would be an item on the agenda for a vote.
And if I have to do that, Mayor, I'm happy to include the things that you articulated also, that we should receive feedback from the committee about their efforts, and broadly speaking.
From which committee?
The Sister City.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I do think we should ask for their input and follow the process.
Of course, that's fine.
And so I think you've reached the end of the time for it not being on the agenda to say we'd like it discussed at a future meeting.
Mr. Masuda?
Mayor, I'm sure you're aware that the Sister Cities group has split. They have a split there, and that makes it so unfortunate, so I'm, and, I mean, I know of it, and I hear about it, so I'm kind of wondering if, what we would do going forward.
Yeah, it's, this may, if not handled properly, may cause more of a split on the Sister City Committee is my concern. So with that, let's, anything else on that?
Where's Nina when we need her?
I know, I know. So in that spirit, Mr. Madison, let's ask everyone to stand and adjourn in the memory of three great contributors to Pasadena. And, you know, I always say that our city is great, not necessarily because of buildings or, you know, or architecture, but our city is great because of the people. And, you know, they're, we're recognizing people who have contributed greatly to our city to make us who we are, and so I'd ask that we stand and adjourn in memory of Reverend Joan Taylor and Larry Edson and Nina Archamsky.
And Mayor, also, we agreed to...
Oh, thank you.
Just also adjourn in memory to the civilians who've lost their lives in Israel and Palestine.
Yes. And so, if we'll observe a moment of silence? Thank you.